Thank you. The Board of Custer -- or Custer County Board of County Commissioners meeting will come to order. Let the record show that today is August the 8th, 2018 at 9:00 a.m. We'll get to that, sir. Senator Crowder, would you do the honors and the pledge allegiance, please?
Sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. And I know we will have audience introductions later, but I want to officially welcome Senator Crowder, sitting in our commissioner meeting on his way home from meeting in Denver. So, nice to have you here. Thanks, sir. Appreciate that. Thank you. We are honored. Would you call the roll, Madam Secretary?
Commissioner Candace.
Here.
Commissioner Flower.
Present.
Commissioner Prince.
Yep.
Attorney Clint Smith.
Present.
And Attorney Lieutenant Moore Burtigati, present.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that. Amendments to the agenda, gentlemen?
I have them.
I know on your printed agendas, the land lease-to-purchase agreement was moved to unfinished business from yesterday. It was not on the posted agenda, so I wanted to make a note of that. Because we were in the midst of that meeting yesterday, or that item of business under new business, Attorney Smith had to leave, so we were able to unfinished that and rolled it into unfinished business today. So, that is why it is on the agenda in that location. Audience introductions. Ms. Jackie?
Jackie Bubas for the Sentinel.
Claudia Morris.
Dallas Anderson, Airport Board.
Lynn Legree, Airport Board.
Justice Senator Larry Crowder.
Nice to have you. Welcome, you guys. Thank you for taking time out of your day to be here. Appreciate that. I don't believe we have any minutes to approve at this time. Commissioner items from anything since yesterday, gentlemen? Commissioner Candace?
No.
Commissioner Prince?
Nothing since yesterday.
Nor do I. Attorney items?
Nothing new.
Okay. Do you anticipate an executive session today?
I guess it's going to depend on whether there are going to be any legal issues discussed about the contract.
And just so that we're clear, when we get to that point on the agenda, if any of the commissioners have questions about that, how do we determine if they're legal questions or not? And how do we go about permitting? Probably me from asking some question that I have some business asking in public.
If you ask me a question, I start trembling.
Then, I know.
It's probably a legal question.
And maybe we should go, "I'll let you know if I think it's something we should discuss
confidentially." I'm going to have to give you advice on it.
And again, I ask this in preventative vein. The terms of the contract should or should not be discussed in public now, or today?
Today's the day we talk about it.
Okay.
I mean, in general terms, if anybody wants a copy, I guess we can have Brenda print it up quickly.
So, the terms, specific terms today will be made public?
Right.
During this meeting?
Right.
And then, I'm assuming at some point, you will say, "You know what? We better deal with that in executive session." Is that fair to?
Right. There were some questions that were raised. It was shared with some others ahead of time, and there were some questions. I can certainly address all those, but I would rather address those privately if they're brought up today.
Okay.
Because I have answers for all of them.
You're confident that what you have is fine?
Yes.
We just need to hear what you've got.
Yes. But if, I mean, if those questions want to be asked by the individual that raised them, I, you know, I can talk to your answer them all, but I'd rather do that in private.
Okay. And so, then my question is this. If that occurs, or we have questions about that, then should we consider executive session prior to voting on the item? That's really what my...
Yeah, and it's going to be hard for me to say. I think some of the answers are so obvious that it's not really something I need to go into detail.
Correct. And just general questions.
Yeah. So, I guess I'd rather just play it by ear and see where we're at. If I feel uncomfortable, if I think it's going into the arena of confidential legal advice, then I'll advise you in that. But otherwise, I'd rather talk about it as much as we can in open session.
Good. All right. Anything else, sir?
No, that's it.
Thank you. Administrative item, Assistant?
I was asking about the DA budget meeting yesterday, and you should have all gotten an email. It's, I believe, if my memory serves me correctly, it's August 30th at 1:00 p.m. Is that right?
The question I have, was that going to be at the Chaffee County building by the fairgrounds, or do you know where? I didn't see where it was going to be.
I thought they said in Fremont, but I'm not sure, and I can verify. Don't check that.
We usually have our meetings at the fairground.
What's that?
29th.
Is it the 29th? Okay. See, my memory didn't serve me correctly.
That's a bummer.
Yeah, I'm assuming we will get a follow-up confirmation on, because they still had a couple other counties that they were waiting for confirmation on that, I'm hoping. Because I'm like you, I asked Brenda this morning, I'm not sure where that is.
I just didn't put where.
Yeah, and it's tentative, too. She said, because she hadn't heard back from us. Anyway, that's it.
All right.
Let me have seconds here, real quick. Since she mentioned meetings, and I think I mentioned yesterday that we are going to have a Justice Center Committee meeting as soon as we get Park County Development Director and the other representative. Those dates, did I tell you guys what they're considering?
I don't think so. They being the Justice Center?
Yeah, the one, the open dates that they can come are considering, and we got to wait for the guy from the state. And I can tell you what those are. That would probably be good, just to have for planning purposes.
And then, while you're looking that up, I would just inform you, gentlemen, that we did mail the DOLAS ready grant applications back to them today.
Okay. Pull up this...
Oh, I do have tentative Justice Center meeting on August 22nd at 10:00.
That's the, that's the normal one.
Okay.
So, I'll tell you the options here for a special meeting, to get as many as we can. Here. Let's see.
And then, I'm going to press on while you're looking.
Yeah, go ahead.
Because I just want to say again, we do have public comment early in the agenda. So, when we get to that point, if you have any items you wish to discuss, we will do that. We'll try to limit that to 10 minutes or so.
Available dates that they're, depending on our main guest, is 8, 13, 20, 21, and 27. It'll happen on one of those four days. I just got to get confirmation.
13?
13, 20, 21, and 27 for the presentation by Park County, and it'll include discussion on the county building they built, as well as the Broomfield Center that was built several years ago.
And what timeframe are you looking at?
That we can talk about when I get, they can't get here any sooner than 10. So, I'm thinking 11 through 1 or 2.
On 21st, we have a CES meeting, so...
Yeah. What time is it?
2:00.
I have two weeks.
Hasn't had table talk, so... Okay. Thank you, sir.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Good. Public comment. Anything for the good of the order? Yes, sir. Please.
I don't know what the standard says.
Just have a chair. You want to face everybody.
Either one.
Well, whoever you want.
Yeah, it's fine.
You know, I represent the district. What I try to do is get out and see all the county commissioners on an annual basis. Due to the amount of interim committees I've had in the past, it's been somewhat of a hindrance, but I'm, you know, I would like to, you know, this year's been pretty productive. You know, there's a lot of issues in the state that's going on. Some of the things I'm working on right now that would affect Custer County is your DA funding has an imbalance. Your public defenders are fully funded by the state, and your DA is actually, you have a judicial district that's taxpayer-funded. So, we're trying to come up with a way to make the parity more even. That's not to say that we're, that the counties would be dismissed of their responsibility. What it means is basically, we're trying to get more money into the DA's office so they can actually hire people that will stay, and have the smaller judicial areas not become a stepping stone for other areas of Metro A. You know, I met, I just recently met with CDHPE on, you know, what we're discovering, there's been a re-regulation on septic system administration, and I felt that that was a little bit over the top, what they've done. A lot of it is, if a person has to replace it, you know, the cost is almost astronomical if you're looking for, at people of, you know, middle to lower income class, you know, the cost is just too great. And I think what we need to do is continue to work with CDHPE, and, you know, their stand is, you know, blanket, almost a blanket-type situation for everybody in the state, regardless of where you're at or whatever. You know, contractors have been putting septic systems in since day one, and, you know, the engineering costs and everything else that are accumulated on this is almost double the cost. Plus, some of the materials they're requiring are coming from other areas. So, it's a little bit, you know, we're in the preliminary talks on how to reform this for rural Colorado that will fit. As you, I don't know if you're aware, but we went through quite a period of time with our landfills with CDHPE on trying to determine how to best, how best fits with rural Colorado, smaller populated areas. It's tough not to crack, but we continue to make some progress. But, you know, the reality is, I'm just down here to kind of listen to you as to what, what measures you think at the state level we should be taking to help your county. And, you know, and, you know, I continue to work for the district. I'm in my sixth year. I have two years to go, and then I'll be terminated. There'll be somebody else's turn at that point in time, but Custer County's special. You know, it's like a hidden gem that flourishes, you know. I represent 16 counties, and what's ironic about it, 15 of those 16 counties are below the federal poverty level. The only county I represent that's not is Custer County. And it's, it should be a mark of pride for the county on how well they're doing.
Good. Thank you.
So, I don't know if there's any questions. I know you've got a busy schedule. You had a lot of meetings, and I don't want to take a lot of your time up.
Well, certainly, we appreciate you being here, and we'll take whatever time we need. So, it's not a problem.
You know, you should never tell a politician.
Yeah. Well, yeah, I do want to, first of all, thank you for attending our Lincoln Day Dinner. That was fun. We enjoyed you and Representative Wilson both being there, and your wives. So, thank you for your interest in our county.
As a Cal man and a former ring man, I get excited on auctions. You know, I just have a ball.
Yeah, well, we enjoyed it. It was fun.
Yeah, it was quite a, actually, it was quite a setting, that historic area.
Yeah, that nice.
The Grange Hall. I was pretty impressed.
You did a good job of motivating people to bid, so that helped.
Well, some of your...
Pies were pretty good.
Some of your big spinners in pie auction are sitting in this room.
Yeah. Yeah, and I thought, too, I just, after that, subsequent to that, I thought, you know, it's nice that a person in your position as a state senator can have fun and not worry about being criticized.
Well, you know, with this, Commissioner Prince was talking about his wife. I was asked this morning, I went over here to Willie's Day of Breakfast, and somebody asked me, "How do you, how do you keep everybody happy?" And I said, "Well, really, the only person I'm really trying to keep happy is my wife."
There you go.
And I said, "You know, if Mama happy, everybody happy."
Everybody happy.
So, but, you know, I really, I enjoy interacting with people. You know, I'm, like, well, I'm a fifth-generation Coloradoan and a lifetime cattleman. So, I, you know, I really do, I like people.
Yeah.
I really do.
Well, there were several comments afterwards that they said that was one of them.
Well, I think, you know, I've, I've been around, you know, I think what I would consider a stuffsure politician that thinks there's an aura around him, and I, you know, I'm not a, I'm not comfortable with that. You know, I take my job very serious, make no mistake, but I treat people like I'd like to be treated.
Absolutely. Well, they, a lot of people said that was one of the more fun Lincoln Day dinners we've had in a long time, so thank you for that. The other thing is, and you alluded to it a little bit with CDHPE, and that's the landfill thing. You know, we have our own landfill here, and we're in the process of trying to get some engineering done and finish permitting the property that we have on there. And so far, as commissioners, we've felt that they've been very good to work with. I've sat in on those meetings at CCI, and it sounds like they're really trying to be more user-friendly and not drop the hammer on everybody, including those small rural counties, so...
We have a great relationship with them at the landfill.
Yeah, well, you know, there's other areas that they're actually trying to move into a transfer station-type situation.
Right.
We don't want that to happen.
Well, the thing about it, in some areas are, some areas, it's a benefit. It's just how you, you know, however you look at it. But it's been, you know, some of the tests, they want water quality, air test, is, if you're, if you're drilling down 100 feet to test the water, the water's 300 feet deep, that those type of situations, you know, are of concern to me because of the cost to get to where they, it does me a good run.
And they recognize that, by the way. They see, and they use common sense on that. With us, they haven't.
And when we met with them at the landfill, that was exactly one of the things we talked about with them, and we appreciate it. I said, "Hey, if we're not going to drill to the depth of your water, then we're not going to hammer you about water quality above that." And they said, "We understand. We're not going to drill 300 feet to get the water. But if you don't have a water issue at 100 feet, and that's where we drill, then guess what? We're going to give you the green light." And we just appreciated that. Because I don't think it's always been that way.
Yeah, you know, I met with them yesterday on some issues. And, you know, we're having a situation in southeastern Colorado where this uranium has been detected in the drinking water. Well, they have the Arkansas Valley, or, excuse me, the Arkansas Ryan Pan Project. But in 1962, they set up this situation called the conduit for Pibb Littlemore. And the reason I brought this up is I'm talking to CHPE, and they indicate that there is a problem with the water there. But all they do is they go as far as testing the water, see what the problem is, and come up with a remedy to fix it. But I'm saying that, you know, we have this conduit project that would take care of that. That has been authorized by Congress. So, I think now's the time to get the conduit in. So, I'm asking CDHPE, I says, "Okay, now that you found a problem, how to fix that filtration problem, would it not be in the best interest of people to fix it once and for all?" And that's a conduit from Pibb Littlemore. You know, so what I'd like CDHPE is to think a little bit outside the box, except to where the delivery point of the object is, whether it be drinking water, or landfill, or septic system water. You know, you just need to be a little broader, because I, and I told them, I says, "I realize that you are all Metro people, and you probably have, it's probably a rarity that you're ever around a septic tank. So, instead of, instead of kind of like the science that you think, you know, and it very well might have been a situation that happened very remotely, but normally, our septic tanks, our septic systems do not give us a water quality problem."
Absolutely not.
So, to create a situation where you have, ought to be engineered. And I, we all want safe water. That's the thing. But we, not to the, not to the point where it breaks elderly people or people with septic tanks. So, we just need to use a little common sense.
Good.
That's a real good issue, because we even got into it yesterday. Even though we are not a poor county, we are on the edge with a lot of people, and it is cost prohibitive to do change out there.
Yes, it is.
First-hand. We got a lot of systems that are still 100-gallon tanks in the ground, you know, with rock bed going out.
But I think that, you know, personally, I think there's contractors around that can design.
Sure.
Just by, just from their experience.
Absolutely. So, any help you can do there is pretty good.
I just don't believe the government should be, you know, dominating on our pocketbooks to get something that we all want.
Great. Do the audience have any questions for Senator Crowder?
Great audience.
I got a question.
The lady.
Yeah, we're, there's a private group of us that are working to bring an educational opportunity to the county.
Yes, ma'am.
And so, that, the goal is that the kids of the county come back here with their education and professional knowledge in things like forestry, geology, archaeology, you know, wildlife biology, you know, including ranching and the farming. So, more kids come back home. That's the goal. And where could we tap into at the state level to help us connect in with the educational college system? Maybe get some grants for some of the kids that graduate out of our outdoor lab program? Can I get with you at some point down the road here and look into that?
Yeah. I will tell you, what we're trying to do is incentivize exactly what you're doing, but it starts in the high school.
Yes.
You know, like, homegrown is the best, and the way it started, basically, we're becoming, having a nurse shortage potential in the future, as well as schoolteachers. So, if we can get, if we can get into schools and, you know, incentivize those students with grants for higher education, with whatever it takes to, with stipulations that they come back for a certain period of time. But I think, I think homegrown by far is the most acceptable and best pathway to go on anything that you're talking about. Now, as far as grants and whatnot, I wouldn't know where to tell you to start looking. But I would start with higher education, ask them, because the program that's tracked is not, is pretty well thought of throughout the whole region. And I'm not trying to duck your question. I just said it on the work.
No, it's fine.
But I think, you know, your CU would be a good, CU, CSU, how to get, how to look at grant situation to incentivize people to come back. The reality is, the rural Colorado population is decreasing. Not at a, not at an over-alarming rate, but it is decreasing. So, if we could get a situation, I like to tell the story about the little girl in, I'm sorry, not little girl, the young lady in Baca County. Her dad was a dentist. He was the only dentist in Baca County. Now, he's retired, and she's the only dentist in Baca County. Not only in Baca County, but the county next door in Kansas, she's the only dentist in that county. And so, and that's a good, great example of homegrown. Those are people we'd like to maintain and keep in the area. But I think, I think a good, a good way to do it is have your local government, your local doctors, your local whoever to go out to the school and talk to the kids as a group. Say, you know, "We're looking at the future of the area." Now, what we think would assist that future of this area is students who would grow up, get educated, and come back and provide services. Hope that helps you.
Perfect.
But everybody's trying to come up with the best way to incentivize homegrown that we can.
Good.
Thank you.
Attorney Smith?
Well, it's just a little while ago, you said you were a cattleman and a ring man.
No, I am.
Oh.
I am a cowman.
Okay, well, I'm a city boy. To me, a ring man is a jeweler. So, what is a ring man?
What you have is you have auctioneers, and the ring man actually gets the cattle in there, but he takes the bids from the audience.
Oh, okay.
And, you know, the auctioneer's watching everything, and the auctioneer's also trying to develop additional bids. But the ring man is kind of the guy that sets the tone, if that makes any sense.
I've seen that. I just didn't know what to turn.
Yeah. He actually did that with the pies.
Yeah, well, see, here's the auctioneer.
If you look at the size and the breadth of this man's fingers, you know he's probably not that kind of a ring man.
One of the things we were doing was, if someone would not take a bid, we would offer them additional funding to help get the bid. I'll own you $5. I'll give you $5.
That's right.
But it's just a lot of fun.
On a $100 pie, we'll give you another $5. Yeah, thanks for...
You know what? It's a pleasure being here, and I know that, I know I've been in two days of meetings. I know what you're talking about. I know you've got a long day ahead of you, but it's always a pleasure to come. You know, I stand ready to serve in any way I can.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
But it's a pleasure seeing you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you for your service.
Let me, let me have you leave on, you mentioned a, being a politician, you can believe, and you know, whether people believe politicians. Have a young grandson, we got several grandsons. He's eight years old. We went through and I became a commissioner, and I promised him that we'd go horseback riding. And he, and I finally had to say, "Today, I can't, where I got to go to a commissioner's meeting."
Yeah.
And he says, to his dad, says, "That's okay, isn't it, Dad?" He says, "Now that the, currently calls me the Colonel." I said, "Grandpa, I'm a retired Air Force..."
Oh, you are.
"Now that the Colonel's a commissioner, he can't keep his promises."
Oh, God.
And it was innocent, and it meant it in that I'm so busy, you know, I got to, you know, but I'm out of the, I'm out of the...
We don't want, we don't want that bleeding over here.
How long have you been?
About 30 years.
Wow, that's cool.
Retired Colonel.
When'd you retire?
Oh, five.
Oh, I see. We just had a situation in Grand Junction. I was at a grand opening for Colorado National Guard, One Star Center.
Yeah. All those guys are my buddies.
Well, you know General Lowell?
Yeah.
Yeah, he's a, he's a good guy.
You Mike Edwards?
Yes. Yes.
As much as I enjoy you two exchanging pleasantries, all...
Get on with this meeting.
But, you know, the reason I bring it up, I'm a big advocate of Colorado National Guard, plus I'm a veteran as well.
Thank you.
I know you're probably wanting to go, know that you're more than welcome to stay and observe.
Well, I, you know, I appreciate that, but like I say, I just thought I'd stop by and visit with you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
You know, the worst thing in the world is to be felt like you're forgotten.
Yeah. Well, we appreciate it, sir.
Yeah, thank you for doing that.
Thanks for coming. Good to have you, sir.
Colonel, thank you very much.
Ladies, oh, Mr.?
Yeah, thank you. Now, I know what it means.
Always a pleasure shaking a lawyer's hand. In the press.
Thank you, sir.
We said he's our attorney. We didn't say he was a lawyer.
Oh.
Is there a difference?
And probably would have been better if I'd actually gone to law school.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you all for...
Thank you for stopping.
Yes, sir. Other public comment?
That was very, that was very nice. I appreciate him coming.
It was great.
Sorry.
The thing is, talking about the CDHP thing, I kind of caught wind of that a couple weeks ago, and it just scares me to death, because if I had to replace my septic system, I couldn't do it.
And you couldn't live in your house.
And you couldn't live in your house.
Well, yeah, you can't live in your house, and.
And I can't, I can't afford to move.
Right.
I, I couldn't pay rent anywhere.
Terrible, terrible situation.
I'd be camping out here on the lawn.
You know, there's a big push at the state to make everybody have an engineered system, which, you know, it's just ridiculous.
I engineered my system three times bigger and sturdier than it really needed to be at the time. Fortunately, it's only fifteen years old, so I expect another fifty years out of it, if I make. Anyway, yeah, just, let, let's follow on with the thing.
Yeah, scary business. Yes, ma'am.
Um, I don't know, I would, it would be classified as unfinished business or not, and it's regarding, follow over probably from the July fifth meeting with commissioners and, um, tourism board in regards to, um, I'm a person.
Okay, um.
Yeah, I can.
It's not tough.
Go ahead.
Um, we have a tourism board meeting on, what day is it?
Well, we need to change that, um, I think after we talk today.
This is not really, it needs to go through the tourism board first, and then it comes to the commissioners.
It already was through the tourism board previously, it was pre-approved.
You're talking about a, a.
Pre-approved.
Member.
Letter of interest that was pre-approved.
By?
By the tourism board, it was when Greg was still on.
Who's the person?
Board at that time, that was Charles Ellis.
Charlie Ellison?
Uh-huh. And, um, he knows that when he comes in, his term would probably be up at the end of this year, um, knowing that, at that time, then he will decide whether to continue on.
Okay.
Are we still looking for a beacon?
Well, that, that comes under the new, that comes, that comes under the new, and we have to look at, like Jay said, that this is one that was already.
I do remember he, he did put a letter in.
You guys already did that, we, at that time stated that if Obie came up, he would be the next, when they come in.
Well, I think.
I think it's appropriate, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I think it would be appropriate as for the tourism board to recommend to the BOCC the individuals that they would like to be on the tourism board, and then the, the three commissioners can determine whether that's acceptable or not. I, 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 even though there is a letter of, of interest and intent, I'm very uncomfortable approving anybody without the tourism board itself saying to me, that's who we would like to have as a member of our committee. Mr. Chairman, I hope I'm not overstepping my bounds.
Yeah, no, I think you're exactly on point with what I was thinking as well. We, we're in this time of a little bit of gray area, um. You do have a quorum.
Well, I thought we did, but it hadn't been relayed to me. Um, apparently, I was under, understanding that, um, Renee was going to be on full, full time, and I just found out that she's decided to say ex officio.
Correct.
So until that, until we have a meeting, Jay's actually on as a voting member, until which time we have to accept what the board states.
I resigned, I resigned as a vote, voting member when the three of us agreed that none of us would be voting members. So I has resigned at that time, at that moment. So I, I like to visit and discuss, but I am not a member of the committee or a voter.
So that's why I am here, is we do not now have a quorum with Charlie coming on, which was talked about in more than one tourism board meeting, a letter was given to you in the tourism.
Right, about that, yeah.
And he was, it was between the two, and you guys discussed that, so.
Okay, uh, here's my perspective, I think you do have a quorum, there's three of you on that, sorry, the minimum membership on that tourism board is three. You have two voting members and one ex officio.
Right, that's the way I look at it.
I believe that constitutes a quorum.
I agree.
Uh, what I would suggest, and just following Commissioner Prince, that, that you formally submit your recommendation to the BOCC. If you want to do that prior to August fifteenth, then we can deal with that at our mid-month meeting, uh, and then we can move forward from there. The problem with trying to do it here, excuse me, sir, is that we have to honor our twenty-four hour notice of business on our agenda, so it would not come under unfinished business.
Okay.
So we would have to put it on new business.
And the only reason I come in is I received a letter, or email from Peggy, I was out, although yes, yes, I didn't get it, the early stating, and, um, so, you know, with, things haven't been closed as far as getting acceptance or not, so I was just working on something that we had done. So, um, the fifteenth, we'll see what we can do.
Are we not gonna meet early, or are we meeting the ninth tomorrow?
Right, I didn't know what the day, um, was going to bring with you guys.
Okay.
That, that's my thing, so.
Currently, you're scheduled for a meeting tomorrow at two o'clock.
Right, yeah, with a tentative on the fourteenth, but, um, that's your call on that one, Jay.
I would like, well, personally, and I'm not speak, and just concur, or don't concur, I would like to see it on the agenda for the fourteenth, based on a recommendation from the tourism board on who it is that you would like to have to fill vacancies.
Okay.
I was going to mention to you that Ms. Collins asked, sent in a letter, I wasn't sure you got it, I'm glad you did, so she needs to be considered appropriately, and we'll move forward from that. So I would like to, I think we're out of line here, because it's really not on the agenda, but I'd like to just say as a procedure.
I didn't know what to do.
Let's get, that's fine, that's why we're talking.
You're in a public comment.
Yeah, we're still fine.
No, I'm with you, but I, I don't want to make tourism decisions at this point, so my suggestion is, let's continue to have our meeting tomorrow. I say we, the tourism board, and of course it's open to anybody who wants to come, it'll be in this room at, what, two o'clock?
Two.
Two, okay, two o'clock tomorrow, and, um, the tourism board can discuss the filling of vacancies based upon the letters they've received, and then on the fifteenth, if we could put it on the agenda, the BOCC could ratify, alter, whatever the BOCC chooses to do at that time. Does that make sense, gentlemen?
You wouldn't have to be there, you can submit your recommendations to Ms. Brendan, she can carry them to the board. Because we're gonna meet in San Isabel on the fifteenth.
Right, I saw that.
Yeah, you don't need it, if you don't want to travel, that'd be tough.
Well, you know, there's pictures I need to take down, they're so hard to present it, so.
Okay, well, we're certainly not out of line, because we're in public comment time, so it's, it was a fine, uh, no problem bringing it up at that time, so. Okay, very good, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Uh, any other public comment? Okay, we'll move on to staff reports, uh, first, uh, staff report this morning is airport board, we have a couple gentlemen here, welcome. Mr. Lynn, how are you, sir?
Okay, better.
Thank you for being here. I know you guys are in flux down there, uh, with your airport board.
Good to see you again. Where's your buddy Bob?
Um, Bob is sick, very sick, it sounds like.
Ooh, sounds like that.
I shall.
We can't have much more.
I know, um, who said he was dizzy, having to hang on to the Walt even?
Yeah.
So.
Well.
Well, since I got twenty seconds, my report is slim to.
Slim to nothing, well.
Things are rolling along out there, um, we've got six folks and.
Yeah, Bill's kind of.
Engineer, yeah, he's got.
Well, I thought you'd speed a little bit on that, so.
Great, so, I think we're all within, we're within budget, and all is well.
Sir, if you don't mind, did, did the airport submit a report before, because I don't have it, did you, gentlemen?
No, no.
Okay, that's what.
Oh, you mean for today?
Yeah, I mean, how many gallons and that kind of thing that we normally see.
No.
Okay.
Because I found out last night that I was doing that.
Well, congratulations.
And he had the good statement, didn't he?
Yeah. Well, any issues with the fuel sales?
No.
Because that's always one thing. The other thing I wanted to just jump into, so I don't forget it, and that is this, uh, proposed new card reader, where do you stand with that?
I think we're, it's part of this whole big project.
Is it?
So, it's in the process of.
Are we gonna meet the deadline of getting one order?
Yes, yes.
So we can get that discount.
Oh, yes, we're pushing very hard for that.
Yeah, we don't want to lose the, what is it, five grand?
No, and we're, we're kind of going to be out of cycle with some of that, but it's all gonna happen.
Yeah.
Embryonically, these guys have done a good job, they've got their budgets projected for the next couple of years, and on that was re-chip seal on the, uh, taxiway and chip seal. And it turns out that I think we're gonna be able, we're gonna go after some grants for those kinds of things anyway, with, uh, the Department of Transportation, air, what do you call them, CTHO, aircraft, whatever.
Aviation.
Right, and, uh, so that's a, an opportunity to roll it into this bigger picture.
Yeah.
And we possibly can, what matching, you know, when it goes to eighty, ten, or ninety, ten kind of splits, we may be able to leverage more, uh, help from the OT six guys as well, because they.
Wonderful.
So, you know, we're discussing that, we're, that's just discussion, I haven't decided anything, but it's kind of a neat opportunity to help these.
Yeah, well, some of that, and our capital improvement program, that we've got several years out, is gonna happen now.
A little shortly.
Yes, absolutely.
Has the airport board met with any of the representatives from OT six?
No, the only one that they, they have met with was with Bob and Lynn, came down the runway when I was there with the, uh.
A lot's happened since then.
Right, with the engineer and the pilot, and then sort of spokesman.
Did you share this with them?
Okay.
Good, good, good.
How's your fuel pricing? Um, you know, we gave you a lot of latitude on that, how do we compare with our surrounding airports?
There hasn't been any changes that I'm aware of since last time, so we're right there, yep, we're all holding them.
So, how many people were on your board?
Was it five?
Five, you're down to three?
Yeah.
Are you looking for replacements?
Um, three or four, but, um.
We had two reset, uh, an untimely death, of course, and then we had.
Two untimely deaths.
Yeah, so, I think we're all right for now, but, yeah, if we get some letters in for some new members, we will absolutely pass them your way.
We're talking about new membership.
Looking to see if you had any letters of interest or not.
You're welcome to come forward if you'd like to, Ellis.
Pull the chair up next to him.
Okay, you're welcome to do that. Yeah, I guess my question is, is obviously you're down two, uh, is there a plan from the board to advertise for some additional interest, or how are we gonna get the word out?
Uh, if I may, sure. I have missed the meetings the last two months because of medical issues, and I was on vacation. Uh, today was the first day I knew of Jolly being fallen ill, so, uh, but the last I knew, we had six, and with the demise of, uh, Bob Custer, that leaves us with five members.
Was it six, about Alan?
Did somebody, oh, and Alan.
You had the word.
Yeah, so.
I just wonder, do we need to get something in the paper, if you are, if you are looking for people to serve on your board, we ought to try to get that word out, that's all I'm saying.
Yes, and we will.
I have a meeting next week.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do, I've read your bios, but I just don't remember, you don't have to be a pilot to be on your board, do you?
No, no.
Is there, I'm trying to remember, did I forward you a letter of interest, or did someone send?
I have not seen one.
I think there was one.
Yeah.
Um, Geipel, Mr. Geipel?
Oh, yeah, I bet that's who it was.
Yeah.
Bill?
Bill.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't seen it, it's not been in the mailbox.
He would be.
Well, I emailed it to you.
Email it would be, yeah.
No, I didn't.
He would be very good.
Did you get a letter?
Definitely.
I believe I did, it was a while back, but I believe I did, and I will re-forward it to you, as I'm almost a hundred percent positive, I did forward it to you, but.
I've been.
She'll find it.
In, in the last three days, I've been through a thousand emails I needed to look at, and it wasn't in there, so.
Well, just now that you got new eyeballs, you'll be able to see.
Oh, yeah.
He would be good, he's definitely concerned and cares about the year.
He was on the board before, he served a year and then resigned.
As a matter of fact, I think he mentioned that.
Well, if it's appropriate, if you want to forward that on, if that's what your board decides to do, you can give that recommendation to Brendan, she'll talk to you. Good, okay, anything else?
Uh, fuel, the fuel sales, seven hundred and sixty-five gallons or so in July, uh, about twice as much as from June, so, uh, and last Friday, there was eleven hundred and thirty-eight gallons in the tank, so if we have a good August and a good half of September, we'll have to order fuel again, before the end of the year, so.
Good.
We'll probably shut them soon.
Decide that with the, um, moving of the tank.
Right.
Sometime in October. Yeah, that's the projected time, so.
Right.
Good, okay.
Sorry, I don't have more, prepped more, but.
It's okay, no, good, man, you don't have to dump on you.
No problems.
Why?
You don't invent a problem for us.
Yeah, we're not, I mean, we're not spending money we don't have, and, I mean.
Well, what can we ask?
Right.
Yeah, you know, my gut feeling is, it, I'm glad we went to the airport board, it seems like you guys are functioning well, and not having to come in here for a rubber stamp approval on every little thing, so.
Yeah, it's all working well, yeah.
Good.
Yeah, budget's in good shape.
Good, okay, very good, all right, thank you, General Loeb, appreciate it.
Thanks for coming in.
You sort of slipped the surly bond.
So you got kind of lesses anymore?
I don't have.
Yeah.
Just reading.
That's impressive.
Well, just standing.
Sorry.
I was waiting to say come in.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, we'll all get a hold of it.
Okay. The infamous treasurer, good morning.
The famous, not infamous.
Good morning.
Good morning, dear.
Good morning.
Hi, Virginia.
Sign on one.
Hey, thank you, and we did get your hard copies. How's things over yonder?
Fine for now.
Any questions for Ms. Virginia?
Um, I have not, if I've got a copy, I missed it, I apologize, and I probably.
I thought she just gave.
Did you get the small call, it was this morning?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, that's why I was looking for it.
No problem.
I haven't.
Can I come up and talk?
Surprises, anything unusual, anything out of the ordinary?
No, it's pretty normal.
Yeah, when you, well, my printer, when I print on my printer, it, when it's a scanned image.
You want original, I mean, will you work copy?
Doesn't matter. That's right, it's readable.
Uh, let me look.
What, what?
That's the wrong one.
Pardon?
Why are you handing it to me?
Oh, I thought, I thought, I just heard you say, did I not give you a copy?
No, I, I gave you a copy.
I know. I thought she was just asking right now if you had a copy.
No, I was gonna ask her, she wanted one like this, uh.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Not scanned in.
Okay, um, well.
That's a good question. Uh, on the upper Arkansas Water Conservation District, how much money do they get on an annual basis, do you know on hand?
Uh, no, I sure don't, I'd have to look that up, it's not much.
That's fine, uh.
Where they're getting right now.
Hit you off the wall like that, I just thought maybe you knew.
Mm-mm, I thought our dues to them were like five or six thousand.
Well, this isn't dues, this is a collection that we collect.
You might be thinking of cog.
No, I thought I read we, our dues to Upper Ark Water.
Not that I, I don't know, I don't see the vouchers, so I couldn't tell you what you pay for that. These are collection for taxes.
Okay, gotcha.
Not for dues.
Were you asking how much we pay them, or how much we get?
Asking how much you collected.
Um, if I'm not mistaken, there's a mill levy to collect money for that.
Right.
And I was just curious how much that runs a year, and it's fine, I mean, I mean, it's.
No, that's okay.
Not gonna know the balance of every account, I recognize it, I think maybe you knew off the top of your head.
No, no, but I can bring it to you real quick.
It's not a big deal, I was just curious. Well, I, I don't see anything out of the ordinary here, it looks fine to me. Do you need a motion to accept it?
I do, yes.
I'll move that we accept the Custer County treasure report.
I'll second it.
From July first to July thirty-first.
Thank you, it's me, I'll move and second it to accept the treasure report for the month of July, debate, discussion, if you'd like to vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote aye, oppose nay, who carries. Point been accepted, obviously, said document.
Oh, thank you. There's the collection right there.
They watch, doesn't it?
Somebody always on camera.
Pay attention. And please thank her for, for Brenda's, and thank you so much.
No problem. Okay, thank you.
Pleasure seeing you.
And that comes out of J.D.'s office, if everyone get one, every year he has a new one.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Office of Emergency Management.
Morning.
We're gaining, good morning, how are you?
Good.
Good morning. I wouldn't say you looked like a drowned rat last night, but we all.
Everybody did.
We were all subject to that, weren't we?
That's right, it was wet and hammered us with a lot of hay.
I wanted to bring Meredith this morning, because she never gets to come.
Yep.
And I want to take vacation next month, so I thought I'd let her come in my place.
This is a great opportunity.
Since I, you know, canceled the two little, approved the leaves for July.
Good, well, welcome, good to have you here.
Thank you. I received a drill.
We will treat you nicer than we're gonna treat.
Man.
Yeah.
My heart.
It's all good.
Yeah, good.
Start wearing body armor. I caught up on my report, and, you know, the front page is the finance part, which kind of touches on grant and finance, and I.
Did I not print that?
Did it get out?
I've got it, I have it.
You have it, and I didn't print it?
No, I don't think.
Okay, as long as you have it, so.
Would you like to?
That's all.
Do you need more? Okay. You know, there hasn't been a lot of activity on the grants, and so I, I wrote some talking notes, just because I wanted to hit on a couple of things and not forget, but the Emergency Management Performance Grant, EMPG, is running behind schedule, it's usually signed and back to the state, and I think in January, you know, we, you guys made the motion to have Tom sign that, when it comes through, we get it right back, it's, it's behind schedule. We had thirty-six thousand dollars last year, Christie's saying anticipate the same amount, you know, we are actually eligible for more, but we don't know what we're getting, so as soon as that comes in, we get it signed, the first two quarter reimbursements are already in and waiting, and it's just their fiscal year, and then they're behind, so I keep watching for that.
Does that mean you used half already?
Uh, we've spent, well, we haven't received anything, so the way this grant works is, it's on a good faith basis, you approve the budget effective January one, their fiscal year is July one, they get the paperwork, and then we've already submitted our reimbursements, and usually by this time in August, we've gotten reimbursed for Q1, Q2, we don't even have the grants signed, so it means we may have to start having somebody bang on some doors in Denver if they don't get things rolling. I did hear that Orphanoe County got a letter back in, I think, March, that said they didn't use enough of their 2017 budget, and they're actually cutting back on it, so I, when I do my budgeting, I was showing Meredith, but we keep a spreadsheet, and we try to spend it by the quarter, instead of, you know, like, making a bunch of purchases in December, like other good government employees might do, but we're trying to hit that reimbursement for the quarter, and we can always make adjustments depending on how that comes in, but just so you know, you know, normally we'd have some more money coming in, the deposits year to date, we have three hundred and nine thousand, almost three-ten, CDPHE, that three nineteen, well, it wasn't a three nineteen, but the, the Wetmore Greenwood cleanup has been the big chunk of that, and Cocoa has now got permission from the Forest Service to go into South Hardscrabble, I don't know if any of you saw the picture of the debris, that big pile of debris, supposedly about half of that's gone now, since the later storms and working their way downhill, so Teresa's working with the contractor, Paul Crispin is one of his final acts before retirement, signed the permission to enter, and is gonna let him do some work, and Public Health wants us to spend up the rest of that money, that grant has to be closed out in October, so I told Teresa, she's gotta get two invoices in, let's get it done, use it or lose it.
Who's replacing Paul?
They have an interim person named, and Darryl gave me his name the other day, and I didn't know him, but I'm gonna have to get that again, and I don't know how long that process will be.
And the acronym CERT?
The acronym for CERT is Citizen Emergency or Community Emergency Response, yeah, so Paul's been running that program, they've got a little bit of money left, we're having a few issues trying to get everybody credentialed and trained, and a lot of the training he runs through that program, people don't want to volunteer later, or we try to feed them into other programs, but there's, there become some strings attached on that, that Citizen Core Program funding through Homeland Security, it used to be its own grant, now it's tied under the Homeland Security Grant, so that is CERT, MRC, which is Medical Reserve Corps, and VIPS, which is Volunteers and Police Services, which is our posse, so MRC and Posse are getting ready to spend down their funds, and then I did finally get some batteries, I gave up on batteries, and, and they came through, so that was a big surprise, I got them on Thursday.
Good.
The Ready Set Go grant, I've gotta buckle down and get done on that one, and I kind of want to run the PILP project parallel, and so my big question on the grant side is, I know Brenda's been working on the new PILP, like, looking at how much money we have available, and whether we have to give any back, so we published to spend thirty-eight thousand dollars in 2017, in March, we published it in, I think it was Sentinel at that time.
And I think they pushed that date out again.
They pushed another publication date out till the thirtieth.
Well, I mean, like, when you can spend by, when you can spend it by.
Yeah, I know you have to publish in the paper by September thirtieth, twenty eighteen, how you're gonna spend it, or you risk losing it, so we already did publish spending some, about thirty-eight thousand dollars, I've spent eighteen thousand five hundred of that, I think it leaves me fourteen-five, and I'd like to start working on a project in Cornavertie that would be similar to the Ready Set Go, and get them both in parallel, but I want to make sure that that's okay with you, or if, you know, I need to coordinate with Brenda's the point of contact, I know she's kind of doing the reporting side back to PILP, and so if you want to sit down.
So Cornavertie's got a priority over what?
They have a hundred and seventy-four homes out of five hundred and some lots, and they're actively working on a community wildfire protection plan, the Sangre de Cristo one has a plan, so I have gotten a little bit of feedback from some other people in the community, and it's, you know, if you're working on your plan, you're working with a forester, Cornavertie even went eighteen months ago to the annual wildfire conference, it was in Pueblo, about eighteen months ago, so they've been really proactive.
But Tanglewood has a big problem.
Tanglewood does have a big problem, and Tanglewood, and then that Alvarado area around there, is where I want to focus the sixty thousand dollar Ready Set Go, so out of the whole Sangre, I've zeroed in on that area, and I, so those are kind of two different pots of money, but I want to run them parallel and get some vendors set, but yeah, Tanglewood has some more seasonal homeowners, but that's whole area.
There's still a lot of.
Yeah, and that.
You don't want it to burn.
What's the other one with all the mailboxes there, I'm trying to remember, Ask?
Rosemary Bridge?
It's not.
It's on the other side.
Yeah, I can't remember the name, so that, those two together, I thought I'd see if, I'm drawing a blank, Alpine, is it Alpine?
Alpine is the area up.
To the left?
The call is.
Okay, so yeah, kind of in that whole area, so in, in, tying into that, I'm gonna go ask Vernon to have, do me, print me maps with parcels on both of those, probably use Code Red, get community messages up, use the permission to enter forms, and then get the bids out with the forms council, help me develop, so I just want to make sure I'm good to go, to spend that money, and then if we get more money, or if there was money in the past, I don't know how we help handle that, but I can coordinate with Brenda, if that's okay with you.
Yeah, it seems like they've basically just given us permission to spend whatever money we have, and, and it doesn't matter when we got it, or whatever.
And I, you know, when I started, I was told we had a little over thirty-eight thousand dollars, the, I think it was the fifteen, sixteen money, or the fourteen and fifteen money, I've got it in here, so if there's extra money, and Brenda says we have more, then we'll keep working. Yeah, and I don't know what else is coming in on that, and then the public assistance money, they may, there is going to be an eligibility, I don't think County Rodenbridge is gonna qualify in Custer County, but FEMA is gonna approve public assistance for the flooding beginning July twenty-fourth, her initial email said back to the fifteenth, and I have not heard anymore, but she sent a letter on that, I did reach out to Gary Hyde yesterday, just to make sure, we'd have to have over fifteen thousand dollars in eligible expenses, and.
So do you have any concerns that you need to make us aware of? Whether you're gonna get it or not, you mean, you mentioned a lot of things.
Yeah, oh, I know.
What's the priority, what, what do you, what's your hot button, is it the two big things you just mentioned on Clinton?
Yeah, for my, mine is the, getting, working on the Ready Set Go grants and the PILP grants, on the finance side, Meredith's working on some surf agreement issues, she found out that Rodenbridge's surf agreement got put under the fire department, and so we don't want to see any money passing through the fire district if it belongs to the county, so she's trying to straighten that out, we don't know how that happened.
Can I ask a kind of off-the-wall question?
Sure.
What is, I don't remember what our agreement is, or is it an MOU with Cocoa, what is our relationship with them?
They are our general contractor for the project, we awarded them the contract, so I am managing the grant, but they are the contractor, so.
Thank you, I knew it was, I remember doing it last year, and so, but I just couldn't remember what it was.
Yep.
And it's under a contract, is that correct?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
And so I have to close it out, yeah, then the other two things, real quick then, would be, I talked to the Code Red vendors, and I wasn't at the E nine-one-one meeting, but Code Red, they're willing to extend us a one-year contract and implement IPOS and go to unlimited minutes, and my recommendation's gonna be that that stays in the emergency management budget, because it's eligible for that grant funding, but I don't know if they had any other input at E nine-one-one, so we used to automatically wrap into a three-year contract, and so they're willing to change that, and then, following up, just on the large animal, or actually the animal response at our Thursday emergency management meeting for the south region, it was in West Cliff, we did meet, Carl Beeman spoke for an hour, talked about his lessons learned, a hundred and twenty, or a hundred and twelve dead cattle, some of them had to be euthanized, and.
Yeah, like a alien ship came down and got a few.
Yeah.
I read that.
I couldn't believe it was in the news.
Different news story, but yeah, I saw that news story as well, that was, that was Centennial Ranch.
That's crazy.
That was last Thursday, that meeting?
Yeah, Sarah Shields came, and then George followed up with me, he thought the meeting was tomorrow, but he, so the, the plan of action is Christie Coleman's gonna set another south regional meeting after State Fair with all the extension agents, all the emergency managers, and then Alyssa has also made it a grant deliverable for the South Care, South Region Healthcare Coalition, so I think at some point, we're gonna have to narrow in, we're all gonna be involved, but whose, whose responsibility is it gonna be, is a grant deliverable, or is just, you know, your discretion, but we'll be, we'll be working on that, and then I think what sort of the consensus was, hearing Carl's lessons, is that we don't want to use the word evacuation, we want to address all the liability issues and try to do some things there, and we want to have a base plan for the south region, and then everybody, everybody's plan will be a little bit different.
So if you don't use the term evacuation, are you gonna change it to run away?
Um, well, for animal, it'll be, it'll probably be Community Animal Response Plan, or Emergency Response Plan.
What's wrong with evacuation? I'm just kidding.
We don't evacuate.
We don't want to evacuate your horses and your llamas and your, yeah.
It's fine.
They had enough issues, yeah, they had enough issues with, you know, the, the animal assessments, the property assessments, the sheltering, the donations, the liability, that, you know, one of the things he told us is they had bulls get loose out in the shelter, and they had bulls fighting, and they had volunteers out trying to get in the middle of the bulls, to separate the bulls, and they had to hire veterinarians, so, you know, there's a laundry list of things we don't want to get.
Sure.
So that, Christie's gonna set the next meeting in September or October, and we pulled out all our old plans and looked at them, he's looking at his calendar, so.
You were talking about the meeting you had last Thursday, was a Homeland Security meeting?
Yeah, it was a South Region Emergency Management meeting, ESF five meeting.
And you're gonna have, oh, yeah, I did have it down, that's right.
Yeah, you had a conflict, and Alyssa had a conflict, I think she had preschool registration or something.
And there, there will be another one.
Yeah, and I promised to get George and Sarah on the list for that, too, so, so we'll keep working.
Yeah, you'll let us know about it.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am?
Do we have a extension agent back there?
Nope. Nope. Okay, anything else?
Um, no, I don't have anything, do you have anything?
Okay. All right, thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in. Yeah, it's good to see you guys.
Very much.
Did you win any prizes last night?
No, if that's all right, Meredith's gonna do the report next month.
Okay.
See you later.
Thanks.
Good morning, all.
I.C.I.T.
Hope we're gonna have fun today.
Uh.
So much fun, I brought handouts.
All right, yeah.
Yes.
Morning. Morning. You. You.
Thank you, sir.
You. Are you, sir? We've got one.
Look at that.
Okay. So, I know that we have a busy schedule and lots of fun, other fun stuff going on, so we'll go over real quick here, as per one of the previous meetings we did, we were able to order an expense card, we had a performance review, which is really nice.
Which was excellent.
Did you, I was gonna say pass fail, or?
Yeah, what, was he okay?
Skated in under the wire.
Pass plus plus.
Good, good, good.
It'd be hard for you to skate in under any wire.
Yes.
No, no, that's right.
Unless it might be Royal Guard.
Oh, I represent that implication.
Yes, yes. Good.
Some of the challenges that I'm facing, that I will be bringing up here in a little bit, the nine-one-one system, we were going to work on that this weekend, due to the installer, we have to push it off till next weekend.
Okay.
The E nine-one-one system is an interesting, interesting bundle of, bundle of joy that's come into our lives as we move forward with replacing at the sheriff's office, which is what I'm gonna be talking about today, and then also, we had a, I'm bringing this up because I need to appeal to a higher power, we had a courthouse camera, which was originally bought under a grant from Court Security with the state, but once we own it, or once we install it, it becomes our responsibility, it was knocked out by a lightning strike, as well as a, it was a very expensive ethernet switch, about two hundred, excuse me, about a hundred and fifty-dollar ethernet switch, so it was knocked out by a lightning strike, which I need to replace, I have spares in place right now, keeping it going, but I need to find out who I need to communicate with about, about replacing all that.
Is that, since it's a courthouse, does it come through their budget, or does it come through our budget?
That's why I'm, I would, I, I did check with Mike Halpin, he said that those are our responsibility after, after they're installed.
Okay.
Is that internal or external?
That's internal. I'd rather not say which one.
Okay, that's fine.
Just a good idea.
Yeah, I wonder, number one, I think, my first question I made a note here was insurance coverage, I wonder if insurance would cover that?
Uh, it's less than, less than five hundred dollars, so it wouldn't reach the deductible.
Okay, good.
Just barely less, but.
Obviously wasn't a budgeted item, but I don't see how we can.
Gotta do it.
And I can order, as soon as I get my expense card, in the next few days, I just want to make certain that someone knows that it's gonna be happening, coming out of the other expenses.
Appreciate the alert.
Thanks for the update, but obviously, we can't say no to that.
Okay.
No way.
Well, since we're in the can't say no mood.
Uh, that was a one-time.
That's your one shot.
Yes, sir.
Too bad it was under five hundred dollars.
Yes, there we go. On the next page is the, there's another issue that we're dealing with right now, with the E nine-one-one system, the, essentially, I'll boil it down, the E nine-one-one system requires a ten megabyte per second circuit, stable, there's things, latency, ping, all that stuff, basically, it's, it means that we need a bare minimum of ten megabytes per second that is stable, that is not filled with latency, of basically data packets getting lost, or anything like that, unfortunately, as I outlined in that page, the CCOM doesn't really, CCOM's great for our live streaming and all that fun stuff that we do, updating our computers, but it's not stable enough, we actually, during the nine-one-one demonstration, they tried to log in, do a demo, do a demo off of their, or, excuse me, kickoff meeting rather, they tried to do a demo, and the latency issues in our high-speed internet were not conducive to the work we were doing, so I have to install a circuit that's going to be higher speed and more stable. Now, on the second page, or the third page, rather, is the options, I've been on the phone with CCOM, or, excuse me, not CCOM, but Century Link, and I see the look on your face is kind of disgust and awe, and that's about how I've been feeling for the last two weeks, The first two are bare minimums, I don't even, they're, they're presented to me by Century Link, so I presented them here, I don't even know if they will completely fit our bill, third one is the easiest, but as you can see, it's also the most expensive.
Still Century Link?
Still Century Link, we're talking high-speed, either fiber or copper is required at some point in time to maintain this system, the fourth, the fourth option is.
What does that mean?
What's that?
Does that mean high copper in the building, or copper?
Okay, sorry, I was, I was moving pretty fast, I apologize. DSL speeds can give us ten, basically, what they send over the telephone lines, copper, can give us basically ten to twenty megabytes a second, not really guaranteed.
Nine point six, no.
Right, exactly, over at the sheriff's office, we're paying for ten, we never get more than nine point six, I have screenshots showing all this, and I could email that to you. The next step up is going to be what they call the Actelus solution, it's technology developed during Desert Storm, basically, they take a couple of strands of copper, wind it all together, put a piece of tech on either side, very expensive stuff, and they're able to cram high-speed internet through the copper.
Is that option three?
That is option three, and a type of option one. They could reach up to ten megabytes per second, or, excuse me, a hundred megabytes per second, but that's really expensive, not even, not even in the realm of ballpark here, um, as well as putting fiber optic directly to the, to the sheriff's office and the, uh, um, dispatch 9-1-1 center.
That's fifteen hundred.
No, that, um, for the Actelus solution, it's, it's too expensive to, yeah, to put over there. I didn't even, I didn't even include as well as fiber optic because it's just way too expensive, um, because fiber optic doesn't exist there. Number four, option number four is, um, is the one that I'm really presenting here. Uh, we have a fiber optic line in the basement, it was run in by the courts, and so there's plenty of bandwidth for us to, um, get a hundred megabytes per second off of that.
Off of who?
Off of the unused lines that came in on that fiber optic line down to the basement.
Picking up that, what company?
Oh, CenturyLink. Everything, everything here is CenturyLink. Um, the, I did not, because we've been having so much issues with, uh, with radio internet, I didn't include any of this, any of the C-Com solutions. Um, as we, we, we met up there at the tower, that, the, the new, was it Chafee, Chafee Communications Company, um, they may be a solution in the future, but we don't know yet. There, it's, it's up in the air right now. Um, they're just barely moving into the county, and we need to see the stability of their, their systems. I will be pursuing them as possible replacement to C-Com if, if, if the latency fluctuations issues don't stray now.
What are we paying now?
Quite a bit.
For our current services, no good.
Two hun- well, two hundred dollars a month, give or take, for the, for, uh, C-Com to the, to the county building, um, about that over to the sheriff's office, plus various DSL lines that supply either twenty or ten megabytes per second, um, and our secure communications here for the, for the county building.
Does this eliminate any of that, or is this being added?
So, option number four.
About a thousand dollars, you just said.
Right, yes.
Jay's got a good question.
No, that, and that was, and that's where I was going. Um, we will be able, and, and I wanted to present this after we got our new telephone line in, telephone system in, because we're going to be consolidating lines, we're going to be cutting down on our expenses. We spend four thousand dollars a month for phones between here and the, and the sheriff's office, and DSL lines, and we are going to be cutting that down, we're going to be whittling that down, but we don't know how much right now. Um, Jason Levingood, the installer for the, for the phone system, and myself have been on the phone with, um, the CenturyLink representative that represents us as a county. And basically, over the years, telephone lines have been added to the bill, DSL lines have been added to the bill, everything's kind of just been jumbled up, and I can give you all those, those, uh, the print-offs of our bills, but everything's jumbled together. And as we start to pull this off, well, we don't need this phone line because we've got the phone system that can automatically shunt the calls there, we don't need this, as we start to decode all of that, we're going to be saving money. And from what we've looked at, what I've looked at, what Donovan has looked at, oh, there you are, um, it looks like we're going to about even out. So, but we don't know yet, we don't know what the numbers are. Even out, um, so we, we, we will, we'll save money on the phone system and the phone lines, and we'll be able to save money on certain DSL lines, even as we, you know, start paying this much, so it's all going to.
We're still gonna pay four thousand a month.
So if we went for option.
What's that?
I'm just trying to wrap my.
Okay, yes, yes.
If, if option four, and I'm just keen on option four, because I heard you say, that's the one you recommend, so we're thinking that once we get our new lines in and we make the adjustments that we need to make, the cost of option four.
Yes.
Will be approximately, and I'll lea- leave that very loosely approximate.
Approximately.
Of what you're gonna save from before, so it's really not gonna be a very.
Not gonna be an increase.
Yeah, kind of a wash.
But we won't, we won't know exactly until probably December, when we start getting everything worked out with all the phone systems.
But the service should be better.
But the service should be better. So my proposal with option four is, we take, uh, we connect to the fiber optic line in the basement. Yes, sir.
Excuse me for interrupting, because you mentioned earlier that fiber optic was brought in by the court system.
Yes.
Is it acceptable for us to use it? Do we have to?
No, it is not accessible for us to use the courts at all, we don't touch that at all.
I understand that.
Um, but there were, there's multiple fiber optic lines in the bundle, so, so.
They paid to bring it in, do we have a right to use it?
Um, I've talked to, that's a good, that's a very good question, but I have talked to the, uh, the CenturyLink people, and they said, yeah, we can, we can utilize the unused legs of that line.
I'm less concerned about CenturyLink than I am about the cour- I'm sorry, I don't need to.
No, you're absolutely right, you're, this is, this is part of, this is my part.
Wait a minute, we spent X millions of dollars, thousands of dollars to bring this wire in, and you're just gonna piggyback off it? I mean, that's, that's my only concern, I think we ought to clear that.
That's a good question.
Question before we go ahead and start spending money and tapping into it, just to make sure they're okay?
Yep, okay.
I'm sorry, I don't.
I know, you're right, you're absolutely right.
The only thing that would be interrupting that would be whether they have plans to add some other capability in the current system and use one of those fibers.
Yep.
Or two.
I, I can see what you're saying.
So you just gotta find that.
I, I hadn't looked at it from that perspective, so. We have been using it, but. Oh. What's that? Right, because there's a, there's a fiber optic internet line going over that we're using. No, no, that's, that's mine, that's mine. Um, I have a, that, that was the next stage of the deal. I have a fiber optic line that is independent of anything else, running to the, to the sheriff's office, by which we run all of the cameras and deliver all the information to the, to dispatch. So my proposal with this was to, um, and, and this tacit blessing from the, from the, from the techs and the, um, CenturyLink representatives, is that we can get a hundred megabytes per second into our basement via the, the unused fiber optic legs that already exist there. Using, um, using tech, which is broken down on the next page, send that over to the sheriff's office and run all of their internet connections via that, via basically fifty megabytes of that over there, and then utilize another fifty megabytes here for all of our day-to, for day-to-day operations.
Any free lines that they got, if they just have a need for it in the future?
In the fiber optic?
Right now.
Um, I believe there's, I believe that there are fifty.
Wow.
There's, there's fifty, yeah, there, there's a bundle of fifty, and I believe they're only using one of it, but I, I'll need to check on that, so.
Mike Halpin probably could help us with that, ask that question.
I can, I can talk to you about that.
I'm just concerned that we're gonna spend the money and start using, and they're gonna turn, I go, timeout, that's ours, we paid for that to come in here.
Gotcha.
That's the only thing I'm concerned about.
I, and I understand that, and I will, I will pursue that.
Thank you.
I'll have an answer for you.
I appreciate that.
We don't have a lot of choice, we've gotta have, gotta have enough bandwidth and speed to deal with this new E-9-1-1 system.
Right.
It's Donna had us.
And not E-9-1-1 is gonna pay part of the bill as well.
Yes, um.
And we don't have that now, so that would be a help.
So Mike helped with the bill, you used current.
Right. Um, yes, I have talked to, I have talked to Buck with E-9-1-1, and they, and he's willing to pay a third of that, what we're saying.
What is that?
What's that?
What is that number?
So, nine hundred and seventy dollars a month.
Just some other expenses and fifty dollar installation, and then you're gonna need the battery backup and the small UPS, whatever that is.
Yes, like, like I said, this is the most, this is literally the most labor-intensive work for, uh, installation for me. Um, it requires a, uh, a high power, a high, extended life battery backup at base, in the basement, um, because we need, it's a, it's about yay big, I just got one for the clerk's office, um, it keeps things going, it'll keep things going for days if it's just running this circuit. Um, another one, a smaller one on the SO side, which we've talked to the sheriff about installing it into a secure location, um, and then some equipment that will back up, be backups.
These are all to buy and prices.
What's that?
These prices are the.
These are, these are the approximate prices of each of those pieces of equipment that we'll need to buy, yeah. Oh, yeah, we'll buy it, there's no renting here. This is, excuse me, this is my side, this does nothing to do with CenturyLink, this'll be my equipment to maintain.
So if we have E-9-1-1 helping to fund this, and, or, it'll be basically a wash between the savings we're gonna have with our new system and this, there should be sufficient money to go ahead and buy the additional peripherals that are needed to maintain the integrity of the system and tower for years and stuff.
Yes, indeed. Um, we'll have to figure out exactly which, which accounts to pull that out of.
Got it.
So, but yes, I believe there will be.
That's their job.
And he, on your bid, wasn't it like eighteen-nine, and they'd actually budgeted twenty-five, so that money in capital outlay is still hanging out there waiting.
What's time frame here we're looking at? Are you wanting authority to move ahead today?
Um, the new 9-1-1 system will not ship until we show that the infrastructure exists to support it, so it needs to be done as fast as possible. Um, I haven't, I don't know from the tech exactly how long it will take, but I can come back to you with those numbers.
Your recommendation?
Just, just getting these numbers has been the, the journey so far.
You think option four here is our best bet?
I believe that that is.
Well, based upon your recommendation, and based upon the finance that we've heard about, I'd like to move that we move, we authorize you to move forward with option number four, um, provided we are, we have the conversation with the courthouse to make sure that there's not gonna be an issue there down the road, and, um, I guess that's my motion.
Okay, thank you.
I'll say.
It's been moved in second to authorize I.T. department to move ahead with option number four, uh, to obtain a hundred megabytes per second high-speed fiber optic data bundle through CenturyLink, and if I may, sir, acquire any peripheral equipment.
Thank you.
Go with that.
And probably I included all of the, what he presented was the cleanup of this to occur, so you're gonna wrap it into one program.
Yes, indeed.
Yep.
Yes, indeed.
Discussion?
With authorization from the court.
Yes.
That's very important.
Absolutely, yes, I'll pursue that.
I'm not trying to overdo, it wasn't part of the motion, that's why I brought it up again.
I understand.
I'm not trying to kill it.
Any further discussion?
You don't, you have to sing that again.
I'd like to add just. No, I don't, actually, not yet.
Hold on just a second, though.
I said, if you do it, hit the court, who owns that technically to get any permission to do that, so you gotta figure that out.
I will touch base with Kay and Mike immediately after this and, and start moving forward. Lisa Rowe can probably help. Lisa Rowe, okay.
And anything else, sir?
No good.
Uh, go ahead, Sheriff.
So I just wanted to caveat, so, obviously, this came about because the new, the new E-9-1-1 system and, and needing a minimum of ten, uh, ten up and down, when we originally sought bids for a new 9-1-1 system and we received these, that was in the specification that we had that, and at the time, we were told that that wouldn't be an issue, that we'll, we have that with C-Com, and it's not gonna be a problem, and so we did not foresee this coming up until, um, for here, just in the last few weeks, pulled up that it had shown that we were not getting ten, and then when, uh, the coworkers came in to do the kickoff, and they could not get their program right, because I think we were getting like four up. Right, and C-Com was jittery. And, and they couldn't do it, and so they, uh, the, the, the project manager, she told me then that we're scheduled for install in six weeks, roughly, six weeks, and she told me right then, there, she said, "We won't even ship the equipment to you until you can prove to us that we have ten, because we, our system won't work, and you have to have 9-1-1, and so we're not gonna replace the old system until we can guarantee that our system's gonna work, because you can't blame them." And so that's why this came about, and, and I apologize, um, the information we had said that it was gonna work.
Good, thank you, sir. Uh, here, no further discussion, we proceed to vote, all in favor of authorizing the I.T. department to move forward with option number four. Say aye. Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries, thank you, sir.
Good job.
Anything else?
Thank you, that's, that's about it.
That should be enough for today.
Thank you, all.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Two yetses out of us.
Human resource, finance?
I know, get your exercise early and often morning.
Yeah. Yeah.
Here are some handwritten, um, the top one is the tower electric that the voucher's not signed. Um, and so the normal handwritten's the black hills.
Do you believe we need a motion for this, or is this in the, this was in the?
Those are our normal handwritten's, um, and I think I sent you a copy of those when I sent them to them.
Thank you for sending that.
And then I have. I, and those are just the, the normal for insomnia and all. I needed to know what number to put on my budget call sheet, what, on the raises, would I send out, or, or no?
I don't think I'm prepared to answer that question to be truthful.
Well, and I had, you had asked me to send the budget packets out, and that was, um, last month, and so I thought maybe you had, um, because ordinarily, I would have sent this out last Friday, um, if you choose not to, um, choose, you know, any kind of increases or, or, you know, because it's not that it's going to happen.
Well, that ought to be something to discuss anyway, so.
On there, yeah, and, and this was, I had sent this in your packet that said that, um, based on economic, the normal letter that I send out, um, and I had wrote on that a one percent, not that it mattered, and then you had said no increase on the insurance, is what you had thought? Uh, yeah, but I don't really know. And I do need to do bids, insurance bids, or if these, uh, but the bit, you know, we won't know that, I mean, it's just a crap shoot, but I, until I can get with Chuck to tell him these amounts to get on the website, no one can start, and I can't move forward on the budget process.
And you're second on one percent rate?
I just filled it in so that someone could see the number, it wasn't.
How in the past have we determined what number to put out in the, in the budget packets, how much of the increase?
On the insurance, I would talk to the insurance company, and they would say we'd had a real, you know, horrible hit, or no, and, and we would go anywhere from two percent to, one year was seventeen.
Thank you.
And on the raises, it's, it's your call, if you're thinking.
Cost of living increase.
Yeah, it's on there, if you want across the board, cost of living, or no cost of living, just, you know, it's, it's all, it's whatever you choose.
How can we educate ourselves to know what's appropriate, what's not appropriate? I certainly don't want to cheat anybody, but I certainly don't want to break the bank when it's, it's not appropriate, so that's why I'm asking, in the past, how did the commissioners do? I don't remember what I did last year, honestly, I'm sorry.
Um, I don't know what you guys did either, I was just given a number.
What's the number you were given, what do you?
Usually, just a three percent.
Three percent is what we did last year.
Right.
And then that, uh, department head could choose whether to make that across the board.
So do we know what the state did? I saw a, the feds, the cost of living increase they gave the military was like two point six.
Well, please don't make it a point six. Let's go three, let's, let's average out.
I'm just saying, that's why, they come up with that by using their economic formula.
Is that for next year, Bill?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I mean, that's, that's certainly something to.
That's a standard, I mean, that'd be based on what's happening with inflation in the economy, that's how that's a lot.
That's where I'm coming from, I mean, I just don't want to pull it out of the air, but now we have something to consider.
Yeah, and I, I, I don't know how they did before, whether it was zero or.
So, have we heard anything from J.D. in terms of what the anticipated revenues are?
I won't know that, I won't know that until, I'm gonna say August twenty-fifth, but if we wait to August twenty-fifth, and I need these back by September seventh or twelfth.
But you see, from this point of view, it's, this is a starting point, we need a number, and we could just have her calculate it on that, and then we can adjust it if we look at the budget that everybody builds and why, and we can decide whether it ought to be And we can decide whether it ought to be 2.2 or 3, depending on how, how things are lined out.
2 or 3.
Or 1.
Got it.
And so, that's how they normally, I think you need a number and I think that's fair. It's not like we're committing to it and I think that we need to vote on that.
We're going to have a lot of budgets committed and we're going to start slashing things.
But we've got to get them doing it and that's right. And then we can decide, you know, priority wise, you've got to have people or you can't execute, so you look at that based on the other requirements they're asking for.
And you're not comfortable with 2.5, right? And that's fine if you're not.
It would just make it a lot easier. Let's say we went with 3 and then we wanted to know 2 and 1, it's a lot easier, a full percent rather than.
Yeah, I understand that.
On there, just to be able to.
We're not overriding that as a thing in the first place, it's a, it's a tool.
On there, right.
If I may interject, I, I think that, given the fact that we were $600,000 over budget last year initially.
We balanced.
That we eventually balanced that budget. I'd kind of like to think that if we start, give Donna a number of 1%, we can adjust up. I hate to do 3 and start adjusting down. That's my favorite.
Yeah. And I'm good either way, in this way that, that people feel like there is an opportunity. Because, you know, sometimes we've not had raises, you know, it wouldn't be a brand new thing, yeah.
Again, depending on what everybody wants this year.
Yeah. I mean, it just, I mean, it happens which way that it goes.
If you just need a number, I really don't care what number we put in because it's all going to be adjusted once we, once Mr. Andres could tell us what kind of revenue we're going to have and we can start working out balancing.
Is that, I believe that the way the ARR is going, that it, or the ARA, that it will be less money coming in again, that we're going to take another hit.
This has not gone out yet, obviously.
No, it has not. That was just my tentative packet of my, my normal timeframe to give people time. It wasn't anything that was set in stone.
Really just a starting number and will it adjust it as we see what? I'm, I'm fine with 1, 3 or 20, it doesn't really matter.
Actually.
Well, philosophically, it does to me. I think it does matter. If we shoot a number out of 3%, I think human nature is going to say, "Oh, we're in line for a 3% increase," whether it's rates, cost of living, or whatever.
The perception, I get it.
That's, that's one of my concerns.
That is true, but you know, this is a budget meeting, so I, I'm, I'm not arguing one way or the other. I think it's okay if that's not going to, if you have a damaging effect too, if you want to get really serious.
But I really like what Tom is saying.
These are professionals, they're coming in here and making a bunch of.
Right. But I like what Tom's saying because if we say 1% and then say, "Hey, we're able to work it up to 2," that would be a bonus.
Better feeling.
Better feeling, exactly. But if we start at 3 and we say, "Hey, sorry, we can only do 2," it may be bitter. So, I'm fine with the 1. I don't have a problem.
On there.
You've articulated my thoughts. Sorry, I didn't mean to jump this hand.
That's what I'm thinking.
How I have to work it through my head.
That's what I'm thinking. But it's in there, certainly I understand and am willing to move up or down, it's, it's allowed.
Find out when we get to know stuff.
Failure.
Yeah, and until I get a mandate, we don't know.
Because it is a shock at this point.
Exactly.
And then I have one last part.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I'm going to sign that today.
Because we have received those funds in, so I can do that supplemental.
Let Commissioner, or Counselor look at that as well. So it's a resolution.
Just to, to a supplemental budget, to bring Kelly's elections data processing back to whole. She has received the money back on that grant and so I would put the $2 and.
This is a fairly standard procedure.
It is. Ordinarily, we do it at the end of the year, but, because we never know when the money will come in, but it's been there and.
And we would have to assign a residential number to that.
Yeah, I think, are we, 19?
I think so.
Yep. 18, 19, or 18.
18 dash 19.
Or is it 18 dash 18? I think it's 18. I guess we'd get 17.
17's on the table, so.
Been very busy this year.
Home or fire?
Can you do all the resolutions from here on out?
This, this, it's called.
That's sort of sweet, man, you're way too smart.
On there, that's because it's money and no one wants, they just want it over. They just want to get it done and go spend.
I would move that we adopt resolution 18 dash 18.
17.
17 on the books.
It's 18.
18.
17, 17.
17 is the issue.
That's a lot of eights on this one right here.
Well, you know, wait, wait to sign it later because we don't know that we're going to do it yet.
Then there's no point in doing it.
Right. I mean, you know, depends on what happens.
Can we approve it?
It doesn't have to be.
We can approve it and let them put on the appropriate number and we don't have to smack a number.
Yeah, and I won't be putting that in on the computer until after I've balanced out the next month.
There's no law that says they have to be in numerical order if we're doing that for our own.
Right. No, they don't have to be. I already checked on that.
I just.
Appropriate number.
I just feel like we need to assign a number to it. I don't care what it is.
It's 18, 18.
My motion started out as to approve resolution 18 dash 18, which would.
Even if we didn't, it'll still be a good number. You just have to backfill a number if you didn't.
Correct. Which would adopt the $8,052 for the election data processing.
I'll second.
Been moved in second to adopt resolution 18 dash 18 for a budget. Sorry, the name just.
Supplemental.
Thank you. A supplemental budget of $8,052. Appreciate that. Discussion?
It's like the right thing to do.
Hearing no further discussion, we proceed to vote all in favor, say aye. 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 Post nay. Motion carries. We will sign that real quick. We'll shoot that off to Kelly for her signature as well. Okay?
Good.
What else?
That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
You'll be on standby?
Yes.
Thank you.
Your chair, you roller something.
I don't know why, hey, thank you. Everybody gets in and out of it.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it.
I'm going to text all of us.
Yeah. Yeah, if you don't mind, let's take a few minutes. I'd like to try to limit to three or four minute break, so meeting will stand in recess. And if we can't get her.
JD is here for Board of Equalization.
Yeah, we can go in for a presentation. Good, thank you. Yeah. Do you guys have the energy still or is everything?
Um, while we're still up here, so.
Yeah, I was just finished there.
Right. So, we can do you those.
Okay, whatever.
That is just.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Whatever, it doesn't matter then.
Okay.
I knew I was down a little early, but I thought I'd rather be early than be late.
And actually, you have a really boring agenda.
Oh, okay.
It has a lot more stuff as. And actually, um, public health is after.
Oh, okay. Well, I'll just hang out whenever you can work me in, let me know.
If she's not here, we'll.
Hey, you. Excuse me. How's it going?
It's good. What about you? Especially during, I do.
I'm just driving a car. Oh, no. At the picnic.
Hey, JD.
How you doing?
Oh, my.
I don't know. I printed this out like two weeks ago and saved it and didn't bother checking.
Just the right spot.
Changed, because that's a.
So we didn't get rain or hail on our.
I got a question for you. How much is a copy on the big copy cheaper?
I'm sure both of you.
Is it your drawing?
Yeah, I bet.
And it's like, it's like 2 by 3 bucks?
Yeah.
3 bucks.
We need to drop at ours either. We're above, we were.
Oh, I had, the Bears were building arcs out by me. We had hail, we had, I mean, yeah, it was coming down.
I didn't get anything last night.
Oh, we got big hail. I was afraid my daughter's car was parked outside and I just replaced my roof last year and I'm like, great, I'll have to do a new roof for car. Went out, everything looks okay, but it was big hail for 10, 15 minutes and it had rain.
Hopefully before you go.
Yeah. I'm towards Rosetta, I mean, in flat hail.
Did it?
I saw Justin.
Well, we were the only county that had the, had this weather thing for.
Yeah.
Last one to go off of thunder.
Well, it was, like I said, my area got nailed. We needed the rain, but you know how it is, it all runs off. It doesn't go in when you get that touch that fast.
Who? Kelly? Um, well, her, her, her house moved yesterday and I thought she was here today, but she, they also have new, all new software for doing.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. So, they're like crazy in there. So, yeah, I'm just going back.
Clint, have you heard from our good friend Mark lately?
Oh, I got something he didn't send you last night. I held up because he's back at it again. He sent me a message on Monday.
You dropped the email I sent to him, I was done.
Yeah.
I was over.
He said what to me, that he's now filing civil rights complaints against the government and is going to turn back on you and the committee.
Not quite.
I prepared a response to him, saying, "Bring him in, he's crazy." So, he does, and this is.
How are you?
Pretty much. You've got to pay back him pretty well. Or 1 to.
I don't know, I'm sure he's getting a disability check somewhere else, but I don't know.
I think if I, if I take, you know, the addition and go after them, I hope everybody else is set up with them, will give me all of the, everything they got.
Hopefully.
Yeah.
It's ridiculous.
Replacement on Thursday this morning, so that's good. What happened?
It's going to give me a trigger rush here.
What'd you have up for him?
I.
Are you here for public health?
Yes.
So you're going to talk to him?
Yeah, I like people list his place.
Seriously?
No.
But I could, I could do it. So I got it.
What are you reporting?
Do you have a low generation? I'm good.
So what you're saying is the days in are the rest of us.
So, equalization, you have anything this year?
No.
You've never had anything?
Well, I have, just lately. Some years I would have eight or 10, but typically, typically it's one or two. Well, let me rephrase that. Typically, in a reappraisal year, I have one or two and a non-reappraisal year like this, I don't have any. The last couple of years, I haven't had any.
Yeah, I don't remember any.
Well, it's because things haven't changed a whole lot, you know, it's, now, I mean, next year, I think things are starting to go up finally, so it may, but they're going to lower the residential rate again next year, so values may go up, the taxes aren't going to, but people don't always understand that. There may be a few next year, we'll see, I don't know. I hope not, because it's always kind of.
Did we hear from Melissa? Okay. I think we'll move on then if JD's okay with that, we'll.
Yeah, I'm fine, whatever. Mine should be real quick.
Yeah, that's, and then she won't mind waiting if we're in the middle of that other.
Yeah, well.
I don't think it's going to hurt our agenda any, do you, sir? If we go to.
Keep them all sitting down.
Yeah. Yeah, the coffee cup works in the gavel, doesn't it?
Yeah, I'm sorry. You're welcome to share.
Thank you, I appreciate it. No, those two didn't good.
Thanks. I've never seen a three minute break yet, but it's been three minutes.
Stomping out them. Okay.
That's how it is at my appraisal classes, I have to take team out, they always go, "Five minute break, be back in five minutes." And you're 10 minutes, 15 minutes, they start out, you're like, "I'm back," and I'm just sitting here.
Is he outside? Can you see Bill?
I don't see him right there. Is he?
He's up. Hi, I'm just going with that. Just wondering. Anytime.
Tom's military type, three minutes is three minutes.
What happened? I thought they were ready to start.
Well, Bill's not here, so Tom will not to get him.
Um, but, you know. I thought I had to see him.
Cool gang's here, huh?
Call the meeting back to order. I think in the interest of time, we will move ahead to the Board of Equalization agenda item, if you don't mind. So at this time, I would recess the Board of County Commissioners and call to order Board of Equalization meeting.
Sounds good to me.
Thank you.
Hello again. Hey, guys.
How are you?
I'm good. How are you guys?
Good. Thanks for your patience.
Oh, no problem.
So typically, Board of Equalization would hear any appeals that you would bring forward. Do you have any, sir?
I was not notified of any and they're supposed to send them to you guys and as far as I know, Brendan Kelly, I checked and busted them and they haven't heard anything, so I don't believe there are any, which is fairly typical in a non-reappraisal year like this.
And anyone in the audience here to have an appeal for that Board of Equalization?
I just had a question. When do those letters go out?
Okay. Do you have an appeal to present to the Board? Okay. We will answer your question. What letters are you referring to?
Valuation letters.
Oh, the notices of valuation? They go out May of each, May and odd years and then in an even year, they don't go out unless there's a change to the property and property valuation. But you can appeal every year and your full value is also shown on your tax notice as well as the notice of valuation. No problem.
Okay. So there's no official appeals to deal with? Okay. Any other business Board of Equalization?
Nope. Quick and easy. We like it.
I move that we adjourn the Board of Equalization and move back.
Oh, seconded.
Been moved in second to adjourn, all in favor to say aye?
Aye. It's going to take me longer to shake out. I like that.
Thank you. Good to see you back.
Thanks. It's good to be back, let me tell you.
JD, appreciate it.
I never thought I'd say that, but yeah, it's great to be back.
Considering, yes.
What did we get? Nothing.
I called, I texted her, called her phone after our.
All right, well, let's move on. Let's move on to public health. Look at this ray of sunshine, oh my gosh.
Good morning, Mrs.
Morning.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you, well. Thank you for coming over.
Sorry, gosh.
No, don't apologize, we're good. We've got another piece of business out of the way, so.
Perfect, all right. So, we're doing free sports physicals right now.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, fun times.
Too many more, though.
This is the last day, thank goodness. Um, so, my biggest news is I got to go to Alabama, and that was awesome.
Good.
So, um, of course, that gave me another job with the regional, um, healthcare coalition, so we'll be doing some more planning around that. Um, hopefully, I'd like to see our sheriff, and maybe our fire, and our OEM start being a little more involved in that. Um, just because when the bad day happens here, we're gonna be kind of squatting ducks without that coalition, they'll be the ones that bail us out, so. Yeah. Um, let's see, what else?
Can I just give out the Bluegrass Dental?
Yeah.
Where is the dental held, and who does it, and how does that work?
Okay, so it's pretty much just on a referral basis, so they can go to any dentist.
Okay.
Yeah, um, and then we just have the dentist bill us, so, yeah. Yeah, and, and we are having, so there is a day, I think Monday, um, we have a gal coming to the clinic, um, working through the, through public health in the clinic, which is great, because it's like the clinic is playing nice in the sandbox, and it's, it's amazing, it's fantastic, thank God for Lisa Drew. Um, so we're gonna see, I think, sixteen kids on Monday. And get their dental, like, just do screenings and cleanings, and, and then if they, so that's like a dental hygienist, if that gal finds, um, cavities or any kind of issues, then they get referred on to the dentist, and for as long as funds last, we cover that for uninsured kiddos.
That's great. And the retake meeting, does it move around, or is it always in the same place?
It's always in the same place, at the Pueblo Health Department, yeah. Yeah. So.
Good, good.
Um, two bats negative. Working on a kitty right now, it's probably negative, but hopefully.
And I know you were at the Dobie Fire, what you mentioned here, um. Were you at the after action report? I couldn't remember.
Yeah, I was in the way back.
Okay, oh, that's right, you didn't.
Okay, um.
Did you stay for the flood portion?
I did not, 'cause I didn't really play in the flood, so I didn't, I didn't stay for that, but, um. But it seems like we have a little better collaboration going on between all the people that play now, so.
Plan on disseminating the baby and meat tobacco-free campaign, is that, is that gonna be for sure?
Yeah, we're gonna get some stuff in the paper about that, the WIC program is really gonna help us out with that a lot, because that's a huge, um, demographic is covered by WIC, so, yeah.
I know what WIC is, and I don't remember the letters.
Women, infants, and children, and it's like a food program, like, so they get.
Endless food, okay, I remember that. Infant E, right? Pardon? Infant I.
I'm so scared right now.
Gonna drop the hammer on you, in rare form today, so.
Um, let's see, there's something, what else was I gonna mention about that? I don't know, anyways, yeah, WIC is, WIC's helping out tremendously, I just submitted our Medicaid application, again, I've now been working on that for a year. Trying to get Medicaid. Yeah, it's ridiculous.
Why? What, what's hanging up, is there something?
We just, we keep getting hung up on, um, I, it's something different every time, every month I get a letter that it's something different that I need to give them. Stuff from the bank, stuff from the county, which, well, Donna's been amazing, getting me everything that I need, but I appreciate that, if something comes around, because.
If I need to write an E S T C, I'm gonna.
I know, I'm like, this is why people shoot government buildings.
Yeah, I mean, that's terrible, we need to get this to the people who need it.
Yeah, so, the other good news about that, though, is that because the clinic is starting to play nice in the sandbox again, we might be able to go back to the clinic billing our Medicaid if we can't get that.
Wouldn't that be nice?
Yeah, so.
What about?
Conversation coming down the pike.
What do you know about the E M C basic class? Is it gonna go?
It is a go, they're starting on Friday, I think they have like eight people involved in it, and I think six of those eight are on the fire department. So.
Very good.
Yeah, that is, that is good.
That's good, okay.
Yeah, that is, that is good, so.
Okay, anything else?
I got a question, that issue up there in Bull Yard Park with all that trash washed down. Um, 'cause when Jackie talked to me about it, I wanted a question, 'cause there was a lot of baby diapers and everything that washed down, would that be a public health issue if it was contaminating?
I mean, it is contaminating, there's gonna be E. coli in it, we talked about that, um, so, but again, I don't really have any teeth to do anything with it, so.
And I thought they agreed they were gonna clean that up.
Did they agree to it?
And the neighbor was gonna help with that, yeah.
Who's the names?
I don't know.
I don't know, and the.
Yeah.
There's an absentee landowner, but.
Yeah, I mean, they were throwing all their trash, and they had their own little basic landfill.
Right, yeah, yeah.
It flooded and.
Went into the neighbor's little collection pond, yeah, so. Which is legal, by the way.
Yeah.
The collection pond.
Uh, hazard.
We need to meet again, we haven't, we've kind of stalled out on that. Um, we sent out a email.
Take the email back.
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, we need to get that re-upped again, 'cause we can't fill off on that episode.
How that fell off the radar, I guess we failed to.
'Cause we didn't schedule another meeting, I think is all that happened with that, but, but, um, Stacy and I have been talking about some stuff, so it's still, like, it's still on the rails, it's just.
Good, good.
I like that you actually spell out all these acronyms now, so that.
Thank you.
They don't have to ask what M R C is.
Well, she's finally realized who she's dealing with, so.
Oh, you know what, something I do, I did want to mention, it's not on here, because it just came to light, so, you know, we have this huge fund of maternal-child health money that's, like, built up, 'cause we didn't use it for so many years, which I still carry my mind around that, but anyways, um, so we are going to fund new helmets and flight vests, that's not what they're called really in real life, what are they, like, the little, for the little sheep riders at the.
Oh, yeah, safety vests.
Safety vests, yeah, so we're gonna fund, get more of those for, so that we can, because they had to, like, actually turn kids away last year, because we didn't have enough safety equipment, so we're gonna get that.
Wow, nice.
Through, uh, maternal-child health.
Huh, sweet. And they'll be able to house that equipment, you don't have to keep it.
No, they're gonna, that Donna, I think, is her name, Donna, I don't know, anyway, it's one of those.
Dawn.
Dawn.
Sheriff's Department.
The treasurer at the saddle club. Anyways, she's gonna.
I don't even know, I don't think that's treasure merchant, is it? Well, good, 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 okay.
So, yeah, just all the usual little.
Just a generic question, how, how do you compile the list for the dental program and the shingle, I guess that's shingles backs.
Yeah, so the shingles backs, right now, we're just making a list whenever people call and say, hey, do you have it? Well, it's been in the pa, it was in the paper once, um, but we're, but we're gonna put it in the paper again when we actually have the vaccine.
And the dental deal too.
The dental thing is being, um, promoted more throughout the county. Um, flyer, we put flyers up all over, there's gonna be a thing in the paper, uh, oh, that was the other thing I was gonna talk about, we're gonna start having a, um, like a public health corner in the Tribune, so every week there will be.
I'll keep reminding them that.
Updated information, yeah.
On the other paper too, in the Sentinel.
Well, the Sentinel hasn't talked to me about it, so.
Have you talked to them?
Nope, but I'm.
Well, keep in mind, the Sentinel is a paper record.
Right, you need to talk to both.
Yeah, I, the Tribune came to me and asked me if they, if they could do it, and I've said, yeah, absolutely.
It wasn't you asking them, they came to you.
No, they initiated it, so.
Newspapers are a good way to get that out there.
Um, I just wanna make sure that there's accurate information being going out in public, so.
And that's your job?
It's my job to give it to the papers accurately, it's the papers' job to put it out there the way I gave it to them, so, that's, which has been an issue in the past, so. Um, so, that being said, um, the, the dental thing, though, we're, um, there's things going out in the paper that, there's flyers all over, and the dentists, like, Schultz's, is that what? Yeah, they know about this program, so if they have somebody come in, they have a big, um, cavity, then, and they can't pay, or they need a crown, or whatever, then, then they say, hey, public health has this, so.
So you gave the wrong dates published, does that what's happening?
No, I've had wrong information published in, over the past year, yeah.
Well, unfortunately, once she, when she gets her information to the paper, she loses control over that.
Right, we didn't know about that, and there are public records, they're paid to do that for us, so we, we need to make sure we're doing it.
Alrighty.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Good to see you again.
You too.
Nice to see you once a month.
I know, right, let's keep it that way.
Yeah, well, no, we all start again in September one.
Meetings, meetings, thank you, appreciate it.
Take care, thanks.
Uh, I think that concludes staff reports, gentlemen, uh, we'll move on to unfinished business, uh, the land lease-to-purchase agreement. Uh, I believe we've been provided with a copy of that contract. Doesn't mean I can lay my finger on it right now, but.
Clint did too.
Jay pointed out one very, very slight typo in the legal description. Um, consisting of approximately seven point one nine eight, actually, that's been changed, that's six point six acres now. So I'm not sure if I.
Did you have the most recent one that you sent?
I.
This is the most, this one, I have a seven point one nine.
Did you send it to me?
I thought I sent it out to everybody when I.
Did it, the one that you sent on the thirtieth, or what date did you send it?
Uh, right there, yeah, no, it was, I think I, I think I.
You did it two percent.
Last Friday, which was, what date was that, August third?
Huh, I don't have one from.
When I.
Got it from August.
When I think I sent it, um, and, uh, Jay's, that he sent out on the thirtieth.
I have one from August second.
Do you?
Well, that, that might be.
But, I still, I think I'm holding.
No, I can't find any, so, well, yeah, we don't have it, I apologize.
That was actually a memo to the Board, oh, here it is, right here, no, it, I, I do have it with the right number.
See, okay, 'cause that, when I sent that memo out to all of you, I, I don't, I don't have anything earlier than the thirty.
And what that means is.
It's on my computer there, not here.
Don't make, we make a hard copy of Donna, uh, friend, it's not that long.
Do you think it was on the third one?
Uh, last Friday, which was what, the, I guess that was the third, wasn't it?
Yes.
See if I sent you something on that date.
On the second, you sent a memo.
It's under the memo, keep looking down the memo.
Oh, it is.
And that's.
Oh, there it is, you have to revise one, that's it.
I got it with the six point nine, six point six eight, I'm sorry.
All right, that's it.
It's included in the memo?
At the bottom of the memo.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Wanna print it?
Do you want me to make copies for?
Make up print of it.
Well, I've got the memo, but I don't have anything at the bottom of it.
Scroll to the bottom.
I'm down at the bottom of it.
Scroll, you open it?
Of the memo itself.
Yeah, and you scroll down.
It was all attached to the Word document.
That's it. And so the six point six eight acres is correct?
That's the correct number.
The price put down accordingly?
Yes, it did, and it actually, it went down to where the, uh, it doesn't require twelve annual payments, we can do it in eleven.
Eleven.
Annual payments.
So what is the total sum now?
Uh, it's, those numbers are all in there.
Five hundred thousand.
Under rental terms.
Five eighty-one, nine sixty-two? That's higher than the one before.
No, five eighty-one was, and then, if you look at paragraph number one, and I don't have that in front of me, but paragraph number one, under.
We have it in front of me, and.
Says five eighty-one, nine sixty-two.
The one I have, this is the prior one, where it says seven point one nine acres, the total cost is gonna be five seventy-eight, two two two, so the amount of square feet went down, but the price went up to.
No.
Five eighty-one?
No, no, it, it was six something, from the nine eighty-nine, nine hundred eighty-nine thousand, once you subtracted the gift portion of it, it brought it down.
Oh.
And then it to six hundred twenty-eight thousand.
And keep scrolling down, Jay gets it down to five thirty-one, nine sixty-two, two percent.
If you look at exhibit A that's attached to the lease agreement, it shows the starting number, which was five seventy-eight, uh, and then with the initial lease payment that is gonna be made today, if this is approved, it brings it down, yeah, let me have that, it's easier, but exhibit A has the starting number, five eighty-one, nine sixty-two, it would have been six twenty-eight under the old agreement.
What am I missing? I'm looking at this five seventy-eight right there, am I, am I missing something?
Um, no, but that number in the old one was six hundred and twenty-eight.
So you gotta keep going down where he takes the payments off of it, and then what we're financing in the end is whatever.
Yes, under the old agreement, it was six hundred and twenty-eight was the starting number, six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, now it's down to five hundred and eighty-one thousand, and minus the fifty thousand that would be paid upon approval of this, it brings it down to five hundred thirty-one.
I'm looking at exhibit B of the old one, and I'm seeing the same five seventy-eight, two 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 that's shown right here, that was based on seven point one nine acres, here's the new one, lower acreage, six point six eight, but the price is now higher, am I missing something?
Uh, what we're saying is correct, I just don't know about these numbers, I don't. And let me compare.
The one I just gave you?
Yeah, I'm comparing the one that I had worked on to my discussion items versus the one you just gave.
This is the number right here, five eighty-one.
I guess, but here's the one prior to that that had more acreage. And that was that acreage.
Oh, yeah, and it says five seventy-eight.
And this number is less, so why would it, it should go down, not up?
Your payment table, Clint, is using five eighty-one, nine sixty-two.
Right, I'm looking at the.
Your, uh, amortization tab, so you reduced that by fifty K.
Right.
Yeah, so that was the six hundred twenty-eight thousand.
Six twenty-eight was reduced down to five eighty-one based on the, the smaller.
Showing on the four percent table, uh, contracts he's got, 'cause he's, I think.
Yeah, I think you understand what's going on in the new contract, you're just saying the original one is different.
Why did the acres go down and the price go up? Appears to.
It didn't.
Okay, I, I'll take your word for it.
I mean, I started with the six hundred twenty-eight, two twenty-eight, the number, but once we subtracted the initial fifty thousand from that, that's when it came down to five hundred seventy-eight. On the new one, when you subtract the first fifty thousand, it comes down to five hundred thirty-one thousand.
So you gotta compare the, the same numbers, which is what you're.
Right. And I think in this one, uh, let me see.
Down two dollars a foot is what our net cost is.
Yeah, if you look at, compare paragraph number one of that old one with number one of the new one, it's.
Yeah, that's where I'm getting.
Okay, well, the, under the old one, the original price was nine hundred thirty-nine thousand, five hundred eighty-nine, under the new one, it's eight hundred seventy-two thousand, nine hundred forty-three.
Right.
When you subtract the gift, the old one was three hundred eleven thousand, three sixty-seven.
The gift amount changed.
Yeah, the gift amount is now two hundred ninety thousand, nine hundred eighty-one.
So he's got the right number, but you do have a typo here, I think, Clint, go to, go underneath where, where you start naming the number in the paragraph, one, two, three, and four, and four uses seven point one nine meters.
Uh, okay, that is an error.
It should be six point six eight.
It should be six point whatever.
Six point six eight.
Yeah.
Thanks for catching that. So can I go back, I, I'm sorry to beat this to death, I just have to get my hand around this, so, the Hager folks, the gift they're giving to us is less than what the previous one was?
Right, it's one percent, it's one percent.
'Cause the acreage changed.
I mean, it went from, well, it's not one percent, one dollar, excuse me, 'cause it was one dollar per square foot, and we were gonna pay three, they gave.
I got it, I understand, 'cause the dollar a foot was the donation, wasn't a set number.
No.
Got it, so the number would come down, 'cause.
That's right, that's what we're getting.
Okay, I'm fine, I don't mean to beat this to death, I just did understand.
Huge, huge thing here, we gotta make sure. Roll. So Brendan, do you see that one correction that needs to be made there now?
Okay.
Yeah.
There's a correction, I'm sorry, it was.
Just to bring everybody up to speed.
Paragraph four.
EMS building was, we started with the wrong plant.
I was just, he had a question.
I got it, six point six eight from seven point nine, I got it, okay, no problem.
So, so the whole point here is, we started with the wrong plant, it was picked up by the committee in error upstairs in the assessor's office, and it had seven point one nine, it did not account for the EMS building being sold to the EMS guys.
Right.
And that took that little bit of acreage out of it, and so the acres went down from seven point one nine to six point.
Six eight.
Six eight, so that reduced the final sale price after the gift was, of fifty thousand was given, and. Six eight. So that reduced the final sale price after the gift was, of fifty thousand was given, and so the total amount that we're financing is six, whatever it is.
Actually, five hundred seventy-eight.
Five seventy-eight.
And.
So that allows us to pay it off?
And actually, that amount, we're not paying interest, cause the first payment is due now, so it's five hundred thirty-one thousand, nine hundred sixty-two that we pay, be paying interest in.
Right.
With the first interest payment due next year annually.
So they're the same terms the committee brought to us, less, uh, the, the error, so it's a little bit less price.
Right, and then the, uh, the interest rate was negotiated.
And the interest rate I had down to, to two percent as opposed to four.
And the, the attorney for the Hagars is okay with this, I've been in communication with him, and he was in agreement, he and I have gone back and forth on some of the terms of this. And, uh, and with Bill's assistants talking to Mike at Bertha Haga, we got the final terms agreed on. One thing I should, and I was pretty sure about this, but I verified this with J D this morning, once this, even though there's a provision in here that property taxes would be paid by the county, once this agreement, if this agreement is approved and recorded, which it would be recorded, there won't be any property tax at all anymore. Because then it's considered county property under lease purchase.
Okay.
So we won't be paying any, the property tax was costing the Hagars a little over twenty-six hundred dollars a year on this, they'll have to pay a prorated amount up through July, but then after that, there's no more property tax. Right.
We will have to make sure that that is submitted into the commissioners. Yeah, um, I had a couple of things, one, this contract is not necessary for the Haga attorney to sign this? What accounts is this fifty thousand dollars coming out of that wasn't budgeted?
Good question.
I think it was capital improvement. No, I'm not signing it either.
It was a capital improvement, then.
Okay, secondly, uh, the naming rights, there's no sunset on that? I think so. Is this really a capital improvement?
He told me it's a lease purchase, is this a capital improvement?
I'm just asking.
Yeah, well, that's what, I think that's what Donna was treating it as capital improvement, and she knows a whole lot more about it than I do, so. Uh, it's, says that it would be done before, um, what does it say in that paragraph?
Can we see if she's gonna come over, please? Just upon, they have the right to choose a name, shall mature and become operative. Thank you.
I might also mention that Donna had sent this to Sam DiNardo for him to look it over, and he was fine, he wanted that language about subject to annual appropriations, which is, that has to be in there, since you can't tie the hands of future boards. Before the opening of the complex, they're used, so they're gonna have to, that would be the very latest.
And they, uh, just as an aside, that, they're not hard over on that, that was just something that initially Don Banner had discussed with them, and then after they're thinking about it, done.
And it does make sure that we include the name, cause we're kind of in justice.
Since you can't tie the hands of future boards.
That's right.
Anything else would be in addition to them.
And they did, uh, uh, want and agree to a picture today, if we go through this, and that would be in the courthouse here with the, uh, seal behind them, kind of a historic picture of what. And they did, uh, uh, want and agree to a picture today, if we go through this, and that would be in the courthouse here with the, uh, seal behind them, kind of a historic picture of what.
Yeah, I spoke with, uh, Donna Hobby, obviously, we will need to include, if we move forward today, we will need to include this voucher in the July voucher, because the payment's due off of August one, so.
Right.
We will have to make sure that that is submitted to the commissioners. What accounts is this fifty thousand dollars coming out of that wasn't budgeted?
Good question.
I think it was capital improvement.
It was a capital improvement, then.
I think so. Is this really a capital improvement? He told me it's a lease purchase, is this a capital improvement? I'm just asking.
Yeah, well, that's what, I think that's what Donna was treating it as capital improvement, and she knows a whole lot more about it than I do, so.
Can we see if she's gonna come over, please? Thank you.
I might also mention that Donna had sent this to Sam DiNardo for him to look it over, and he was fine, he wanted that language about subject to annual appropriations, which is, that has to be in there, since you can't tie the hands of future boards.
Can I just make kind of a generic statement, Bill, please don't, I mean this with all due respect, when we started this project, when we started this project, we were talking about which one of us would be the lead on this, and we agreed that all three of us would be intimately involved, cause it's such a big project. And I kind of feel like I was left out of the loop a lot, I mean, there were obviously meetings that I didn't attend, cause I either didn't know or whatever, I mean, you said the committee met to discuss this, I don't know where I was.
The only thing I'm referring to is what we did in the past, there weren't any other meetings that came with the committee, uh, is what they, excuse me, is what they presented to us, and we said, go, give him the authorization, go get it done, and that's what happened. There have been no other meetings other than, uh, they've been negotiated, and then I forwarded everything, and I'd gotten back.
You have, and I, I.
Yeah, there's been no other meetings that I'm aware of.
I just kind of feel like, from the hand of this saying, come on, let's sign it, get a picture taken, I'm going, whoa, it's a good deal, there's no doubt in my mind.
Well, this is our opportunity to discuss it, that, this is the first opportunity we've had.
And I mean this in all respect, Bill, at least, I hope I'm not sounding like I'm whining or anything, um, we're talking about, based on the new number, it's about two dollars a foot, I'm not a realtor, but based on what you told, yeah, about, what you told us, a reasonable price is three, so I mean, a third discount from the Hager family, thank you very much, I'm glad you're gonna have your name on the building, you deserve it for what you're doing.
Well, and the other thing that everybody kind of overlooks, there's no other way we can buy it on a lease to purchase, most realtors and most people want their money now, and you wouldn't have been able to give it otherwise.
This is, I've made the statement a number of times, I'll make it again right now, this is the, a perfect location, where it is right here in the hub of our community center.
Yeah, that's the other thing, that's good.
It, it fits us perfectly, the deal appears to be very reasonable, I've gone over it, and I went through, and, you know, I was, the only thing I get hung up on, the same thing I get hung up all the time, is when I say, where's the money coming from, and that's always an issue to me. I need a money launderer in a second, so, I don't know, maybe, maybe I'm just, maybe I'm feeling lonely today, I don't know. I don't know, I mean, I, I, I will tell you, if it comes to a vote, I am in favor of this all the way, I commend you and your committee, the committee who did this, um, I commend.
Let me, let me, uh, I, I hear you, and, and, um, the only reason that Clint worked overtime on this, when he, once he got back from his vacation.
I know.
But there, the only pressure there was there is the Hagars wanted to move on, because we started talking a long time ago, and they really, really want this to happen, and so they're in the process now dealing with the town to rezone all the rest of the land, to make it commercial, uh, condos, uh, and that kind of thing they want to do. And so they wanted to deal with that, and if we weren't gonna go through with this, that was part of the deal, and, uh, they did not want to proceed unless we, uh, had the first chance, and that's why Clint worked very hard, and, uh, we worked with Don.
I appreciate the family.
That was the only reason.
I appreciate everybody here.
Otherwise, we'd have maybe a month to, for us to toss this contract around, and I did send it out the minute that he, after we got their terms finalized on the interest rate, and, uh, and that, you got it as soon as I had it.
Yeah, the concern, a couple of things I have is, and the chairman of that committee is standing back here, Sheriff Barley, so I will bring this up, I, I truly feel somewhere we short circuited, circumvented around that committee. Now, I don't know if we did, it seemed like that committee was functioning, we were talking about stuff, and then all of a sudden, we quit meeting, and now we're here today. I guess I would ask your perspective of that, Chairman.
So the last meeting we had was in July, uh, no, that's, not sure, it was August, um, the, what is that, the third week in August, I don't have the date off, off the way ahead, at that time.
This is August.
And it's the beginning of August.
June.
So I'm saying, so June, right, we had the.
June.
Did I say July? I'm sorry, so June, I'm sorry, so the last meeting we had in June, at that meeting, we had, we were planning, you know, the, the schedule of what we were targeting and events that we're gonna do, and then, um, at that time, though, from the presentation that was given, and Ann of Arthur, uh, presented the, the updated plan and the proposal, and that's when the committee agreed to have Clint and the Haga's attorney get together and see if they could devote the contract that, ultimately, that you're looking at now.
Right.
Now, we were supposed to have a, a meeting in July, but that got canceled because we, um, well, Bill, you, you know, we were gonna have Park County and, and Werfino County come to present to the group, well, that didn't happen because of scheduling, it just didn't happen, and so we didn't have a lot to really discuss.
And there wasn't anything to discuss from a contract point, because they were still negotiating.
It wasn't done, in fact, I, I hadn't seen the contract until Monday, when Clint shared it with me, and I know Jay asked me, I think, I, you sent the email on Friday.
Right.
Said, hey, have you heard an update on that? And I hadn't at that point, so that's when I sent an email out, and that's when I got the response back on Monday, and then I ordered out to the rest of the committee, said, hey, listen, so, uh, it looks like we have a contract that's gonna be proposed to the, to the commissioners, so, we, we did miss the one meeting, and that was just, that was a, a cancel, it wasn't like we just, we didn't have a plan, we have another one planned for, I believe it's the twentieth, the twenty-first of this month, um, where we'll go over, uh, you know, the schedule and what, where we're at on that, also, we're just waiting to hear back from Park County, right, Bill?
Yeah, we're still waiting on those three, four dates that I gave.
Yeah, so as soon as we, as soon as we get a date from, back from Park County, um, when he gets that back, Bill, and what works for him, then we're gonna have a special meeting where we can sit down and we can meet with them, because, you know, they've just recently gone through this, and so they can kind of lay out what they did, and we're just developing a schedule and where we need to go from here, this was just part of the plan, we were kind of moving towards whether this gets signed or not, because ultimately, we still have to plan down the road, whether it's this property or another property that, you know, so.
Which is another thing they pointed out to me, and this is an aside, the fact we have land, if we do this, is a big deal, cause we can't build for a grant that on the con that will get, like, land, that would really delay it depending on.
And the advantage of the committee is, is we've got, was there eighteen members roughly, folks from the community and everything, and so we get a lot of input, and they've had a lot of valuable, uh, those community members have had valuable input and thoughtful, uh, comments, and it's.
That's how we got to the terms.
Yeah, I think that's how we've really gotten to here, you know, evaluating the county properties that, that are currently on the books, and, uh, this unique opportunity here is presented, so, I, I go with Jay said, it's a perfect location, I think we were all on the same page of that, that ideally, you know, everything else aside, that is the most ideal location we could work.
I definitely felt I had my marching orders from that committee meeting, that that was the decision that was made to go ahead and negotiate why we did this.
I would absolutely agree.
Okay, all right, that's what I wanted to get, make sure we're clear on, I, I, I just felt like things kind of, not fell apart, but things got a little helter-skelter after that meeting, but maybe that's the nature of the beast, that everybody marched off and did what they were charged to do with, and that brought us here.
Well, we, we ultimately, in my mind anyways, we turned it over to Mr. Smith to, to work that contract, to see what could be worked out with the Hagars.
Right, Ms. Harrison, because the sub-land committee took that charge on, and then, once the committee decided, when we worked out all the details and everything, and presented it to the commissioners, there's not much you can do until you know whether that's going to proceed forward or not. And that's when you all accepted the Clint and the attorney's.
Luckily, the family accepted.
But in the meantime, the work is still working in the background, but that's such critical, that's a critical thing to have, is the land, so I don't want you to feel like nothing's going on, a lot of work's been put into this, from a lot of.
You mean the next steps with the committee?
Yeah, the next step, we'll go forward.
Right, that's when a lot of the.
Let me clarify one legal issue for the record here, because even though the commissioners were attending these committee meetings, the, the decisions that were made by the committee were by the committee, not by any of the commissioners.
You gotta be careful.
Yeah.
And actually, the commissioners have been very clear in those meetings, that they don't vote on anything, they don't, I mean, they talk about stuff in perspective, but they don't make decisions, and they don't say, listen, I would, would or would do this, that's not what they've done. And I will say that too, that this contract, i- if you decide to go forward with the land, it puts us in a unique position, because from speaking to Alamosa, from speaking to all the different, you know, Park and Werfino, you know, land is the biggest challenge that you come by location, you know, we, we talked to the folks in Werfino, that they want to build a judicial center, and they actually, they're going to, but they don't have, really have a good place to put it, and they're gonna be cramped, and so they've gotta go up, so for us to have land, it puts us ahead of the schedule, because usually, that has to go into the purchase and the whole building project, and then you have those unique challenges too.
Not only that, we got an in-kind, uh, match here, over a million bucks.
So, if I may, Ms. Hobby, um, it calls for a fifty thousand dollar payment immediately, not in the budget, or is it?
Well, no, but yes.
Typical.
She's not even a politician.
Yeah.
She can keep her promises.
The prior board had put fifty thousand in for building improvements, and it's just chosen not to do those building improvements, to use this as a down payment or the first payment, and so the money is actually sitting there.
Do you happen to know the line item right off?
Uh, fifty, four oh six zero zero nine one three.
See?
Not, not related.
I can't remember my grandkids' names, but I got this one.
So, so just my question is, do we need to allocate that money to something different, because?
It was never allocated.
I'm just having a little issue, look, I'm gonna vote for this, I think it's great, it's what we need, I'm in favor of it, I just want to get my, my ducks lined up, okay? It's not a capital improvement, it's a, it's a physical.
But that is where we make lease payments out of, all of our lease payments come out of the capital.
That's what I wanted to, that's what I needed to hear.
Yeah, I mean, it's a, it, it, it was like it was meant to be, because that lump sum was not allocated to anything, it was because we need improvements, as we all know, the buildings need improvements, and that, it was just put out there.
So in our future budgets, Jay, we would.
It makes good sense, I needed to hear it, cause I didn't know where that, to me, lease permits on land seems different than capital improvement, but if that's where traditionally we've done it, I'm good. So four oh six hundred? Yeah, I, I had that question as well, although I knew this fifty thousand existed in there, now, moving forward, do we continue to operate with this lease out of four oh six hundred, or do we put it in something else?
I, I would keep it there, just because, until we know what, yeah, until we know what's going to happen, or where we're gonna go with it, and it's county, and it is, it is the sales tax, it is the, the restricted money of the capital outlay, so it's a good fit.
So when we budget our lease payment, payment plus interest, we should budget it into four oh six hundred?
That's correct.
Not move it somewhere else? Okay, all my questions are answered, I'm ready.
I move we, uh, accept, and, and with corrections on the contract, as we noted, the seven point one nine, I think that's the only one we caught, right, acres, but I move we, uh, move forward and sign the agreement, and meet with the Hagars to have them sign the, or actually, what they want to do, we all sign it together, what they would like to have.
I guess you said, I'll second.
We can discuss.
The discussion. For you to amend it to fix the typo.
Yes, that's what I said.
I, I have a copy with the typo fixed already, so.
Oh, never mind, too good.
And the, uh, the motion, I think, should be that you sign it, sign it today's date, number, count August one, it's effective as of August one.
It's been moved and seconded.
Yeah.
It's been moved and seconded to, uh, sign the contract for a lease purchase agreement on the Haga property, uh, retro effectively to August one, is there any discussion? Uh, thank you for doing that, because I was not gonna vote to do a contract with some changes, the con, these changes need to be done, they need to be on paper, and they need to be concrete, in my opinion.
It was just the one, correct?
Yeah. That's the assumption I'm going under.
That's the only one we saw.
Other things, and then obviously, they need to be dealt with. You haven't tied a typo, lady, it's, it does not nullify a valid contract. No, it, it does cause me angst as a commissioner, I don't like signing stuff, figuring that we're gonna fix it later, I, I just, we've done it historically with this board, I'm not comfortable with it, and I will probably indicate that moving forward, it has nothing to do with this, because we have an amended contract here, so, the motion does not have to include the amendment that's been taken care of, is that fair enough for you, sir? Further discussion? I don't know that, that the motion needs to include where the money's coming from, that's been a discussed item, are you comfortable with that? Further discussions from the board, public comment, hearing none, we'll proceed to vote, all in favor, say aye. Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. We did, we're moving forward.
It's 2:00, so I told them, but if we're ready before then.
I'll probably be long gone by 2:00.
Then let's do it, soon they'll come sooner, but I need to let them know.
If we need to adjourn or recess real quick.
I ain't going to do that.
I've got to be in Grand Junction by 5:00 or 6:00, so.
So when are we going to, let's project when we're going to finish, we'll tell them.
Well, let me just suggest, I don't know if we need to be finished, we can take a quick recess.
The final copy, thank you.
So I'm okay with taking a recess if we need to, Bill, if you want to set a time, then that's fine. So are you okay with taking a recess to do that?
Absolutely.
Jay, do you want the signed one?
Let's wait till it's signed, that's fine. Yeah, I was just thinking, I wanted, I wanted a correct copy because I got multiple.
Remember my new, this recess.
Bring your dwelling?
Yeah, and then we'll do that.
Issue of the burden of getting her.
That's not an issue for me, but she wants to be the new one.
She may say 12:15.
Yeah, that's fine. We can't put a time on when we're done, just pick.
Are we, are we in recess?
No, we're not. We can take just a couple minute recess, thank you, Donna. Donna?
Yes.
Thank you for coming back in, appreciate that. Yeah, we want to make sure we knew where that was happening, we'll be in a couple minute recess until Bill gets that.
Okay.
Okay, call the board of commissioners meeting back to order from recess. I think our next item under new business is the lookout tower land assignment from the BLM. They are Sangre de Cristo Electric would like to transfer ownership of the lookout tower, of their lookout, of their tower on Lookout Mountain to the county and part of that process is assigning the right of way, as I believe I've said that correctly, from BLM to Custer County. Those documents were provided to us, I gave those to council to look over, sir, I'll turn the floor over to you.
Everything looked okay to me, there was just a couple of corrections that I, one was on page one of the, well, this is actually a lease agreement, the assignment itself was fine, to assign their interest in leasing that land or having the right of way to use that land for the tower, that's being assigned to us, and that was fine. It was the lease agreement where Custer County will now be leasing space on the tower to Sangre de Cristo Electric, where there were a couple of corrections.
We become the leaseor.
The county is the lessor and.
They are the leasing.
Lessy.
The lessy, the.
Yeah, lessor and lessy.
Okay, and you're okay with moving ahead?
Yeah, I haven't seen anything wrong with this, but there is a correction to be made, like I said, in that tower lease agreement that they've sent us.
Okay, and that was the one that was not filled out? I've got a blank one.
I got a blank one too.
Well, the ones.
Assignment of right of way.
I thought that there was an original one in here somewhere, that's where these, these documents were.
Right, but in our board packet, we were provided a blank of those.
Yeah, here's the, yeah, here's the assignment and a place for you to sign.
Okay, and what, what in there were you concerned with, sir?
Not in the assignment itself, there's two different things, there's the assignment, which is, and there's a couple of originals, let me get you, give you this one first because it's got, it's marked where your signature, get that thing off there.
There's, thank you.
And here's the document that you would need to sign pertaining to the, yeah, the assignment of the right of way, that's correct.
And that's the same thing.
Okay.
And there's actually two originals, one for the county and one that goes back to BLM.
And then there's the, then the application for transportation utility systems, we have to deal with that as well, correct?
Yes. Here's the other.
So there's two originals here. I, I would move that we authorize the transfer of ownership and the assignment of right of way for the Sangre de Cristo Tower located on Lookout Mountain to be transferred to Custer County.
Tell what that says, tower over there, what was the actual, this guy?
This is the assignment of the right of way from BLM.
I'll second this, so we can have discussion.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the county to accept the lookout tower.
It's using tower on there, it's all asking, what do we, what do we?
Well, we'll get to that in just a second. To transfer ownership from Sangre de Cristo Electric to Custer County and included in that the assignment of said right of ways. So the, these are the right of ways specifically.
Correct.
Yes, sir.
I know we've been fooled just for quite a while, but in a nutshell, why, why do they want to assign their interest and why do we want to accept?
My perspective, my understanding is this, that they really don't want to be in the tower business, they just want the top 10 feet of that tower because they're relying on that for radio communication back to Vida Vista.
We own that tower, do we not?
No, no, Sangre de Cristo owns the tower, this is the Sangre de Cristo Tower. They're donating that tower, no, I'm sorry, they are selling that tower to us for the price of $10, it is not a donation.
What budget line, that was a choke, that was a choke.
So.
Capital improvements on Lookout Mountain.
In speaking with the Sangre de Cristo rep that was out at Lookout Mountain the day we went out and did the site tour and the inspection, said that Sangre de Cristo would much rather just be a granite, was it a 10-year lease, it's in there.
No, it's longer than that.
Probably 25 or 30. Right to lease the top of that tower, and they said, you guys can have the tower, you can charge the money to your other vendors, we don't care, we don't, we don't have the expertise, according to their rep, he said, we do not have a tech to come down here and deal with it, it's a long ways for us, if we just have the top 10 feet, we'd rather just give you the tower, you can realize whatever revenues you want off of it. Now, that's what he told us and I've got his name on my card, I can, my card file, I can dig that out. So that was their motivation, I think our motivation and my perspective, Bill, was at that meeting as well, obviously it allows us to generate some revenue off of that tower. I think there are three or four other entities on that, well, four total, three others besides Sangre de Cristo.
So if they sell us the tower for $10, my assumption would be that we're going to assume whatever agreements they have with the other vendors on the tower.
Correct.
Do we have any idea how much that is? Is it normal?
Probably no, I think all the money has come through, don't.
It's like 3,000 bucks, roughly, but that's what I've been told before. I'm not, they say anything here, I'm just trying to get a better handle. And in fact, the, the other piece that we've been working in the background is going to take a while, that I keep mentioning is the BLM wants out of the business too, that's why they want to swap some land and.
Right, because that's a totally.
It's a whole different thing. It's a different animal, I'm much more.
So that was my understanding with visiting with the Sangre de Cristo Electric rep that was here.
And how much maintenance will this tower be and what kind of cost to the county and who will do it? I'm just concerned about, you know, I don't want to inherit a house that's falling down, metaphorically.
Well, the interest, the entities that are living on that tower will maintain their own equipment.
Right.
The tower itself, I don't know that there's been any maintenance on it.
So that when you were shinning up and down.
Roger Squire was there, we didn't, we didn't talk about it, but there was nothing ever brought up about.
And we already are obligated to maintain the road up there anyway.
We have equipment on that tower.
I know we do.
CCOM has equipment on that tower.
AT&amp;T is separate.
AT&amp;T's separate, but Chafee Communications has equipment on that tower. We didn't know a lot of that, particularly about the Chafee community, communication, because they were new and they were dealing with Sangre de Cristo Electric, there was no reason for us to know that. We were just a leaseor, lease, lessy on that tower, so we will be going from a lessy to an owner, so now we will pick up those contracts and then negotiate those whenever they come.
Actually, we don't have to pay.
Thanks for the explanation, I, you know, I've been involved fuzzy, so just need to go out to. Well, I was where you were at, I'm glad I went to that site inspection because we physically got to look at the equipment and said, okay, here's the equipment in the building, that's the radio, that belongs to whoever, it definitely clarified.
And to talk to each individual was great.
And in the past, we have been paying lease to be on that tower.
Yeah, and we'll save that money, obviously.
Yeah, yeah. Good, good discussion, anything else? Public comment?
Is Sangre de Cristo paying you?
No.
For the 25 years.
I'm sorry, I jumped, I didn't even let you finish your.
For the lease?
No, the agreement would be that they do not have to pay for that leased space at the top 10 feet, in exchange for the tower, yeah.
And we'll get additional revenue based on other companies that lease space.
And not have to pay for our space, but yeah, I did not follow up on that, it's a good question, thank you. They are not going to pay, it was part of the contract. Yes, ma'am?
So, and I'm looking at the agenda and it says lookout tower land assignment available.
Okay, and that's technically, that is not correct. Yeah, thank you, that would be, yeah, it was just, it's just a mistake, shouldn't have said land.
But, you know, this starts that transition.
Uh, it may, it doesn't have to, it may, we'll see, as Bill indicated.
It's going to take a couple of years.
Totally separate issue.
They want to do it.
Okay, so my comment is, is that, you know, we, we are attempting to move forward on a private funded project, which includes contributing to the public highway, partially, investing and improving that, which will save Silver Cliff a ton of money, and we want to know what our showstoppers are, and when we hear, oh, let's put a picnic area.
Well, that has nothing to do with this.
Okay, has nothing to do with this, but, but, you know, my comment is, is that I don't support the transfer of that tower to the county or any change up there unless we have a clear understanding of what our showstoppers are, and fire, wildfire from a picnic area is a showstopper for us, we're going to go to another county.
I don't know anything about a picnic area, so.
Well, it's been in the public record a couple of times now.
Okay, all we're talking about here is transferring ownership of a tower.
Is a tower, and we oppose that because it leads one thing to another, do you understand where we're at?
I do not, but.
We want to invest some serious money.
Okay, yeah, I don't.
And, and we got to know, you know, and we can't wait for two years, we got to know, because there, you know, I have other people involved and they want to go to another county and I'm saying, no, this is a perfect county, this is a perfect county, this is where I'm from, they have the values, I know they have the values that we're looking for, okay?
Well, I don't.
So help me out with the agenda.
Yeah, the land thing was a mistake, I think we cleared that up. Secondly, we're only talking about transferring ownership of the right of way and of the ownership, ownership of the tower. What happened subsequent to that would probably be dealt with subsequently down the road at another time and place, but your point has been heard, you're opposed to the transfer of the ownership, thank you. Other public comment? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? Motion carries. Two copies, correct, sir?
Right.
Wherever they got their little pink things attached for signatures.
I think they go to Kelly at this point.
I don't see where she has to attest any of it, but I just need to get it out of here, so.
Well, I will, I will give it to her and we'll discuss it, I got a bunch of her, I'm going to have like a pile of stuff for her, so.
That's what she gets.
Now you need to do is have a meeting or have an agreement to assign or to some committee.
Yeah. By the way, you're in charge.
Guess what, you're the president. And we figured out 44 things for you to do. That's what's scary about missing a meeting, you never know what you're going to get called and pulled for.
Yeah.
She needs to sign this.
It was a good gig last night, just while we're waiting.
That's for later, you don't have to do it now, I just wanted to get it out of my piles.
They didn't stop anything, actually it drove us together.
Oh, okay.
I will, I have it.
Oh, you know what it is, right? I mean, you're not just signing someone.
Yes, I do know what it is, she mentioned to me that she was going to take that care of. I'm just surprised she hasn't signed it.
Normally didn't come because of the rain, but I would say there was probably.
Just clear your desk, close your rascal.
That's right.
Okay, attorney, anything else on that?
Not on the assignment of the right of way, but the other part of this is the lease agreement that Custer County will be entering into with Sangre de Cristo Electric, which includes the acquisition of all the property itself, and that's attached as a, there's a bill of sale, the 10, that's where the $10 comes in. The lease agreement was fine, there were a couple of errors, they referred to the landlord, which is Custer County in this case, there's a couple of places where it makes reference to the landlord's headquarters building in the county of Chafee, so that needs to be corrected.
Boilerplate got in there.
In two places, and the other thing is, and this was the contact person, they have you personally as the contact person for any future communications, I, my suggestion would be it would be the administrative assistant to the board of county commissioners, since things are obviously, will change, but will always, or should always be an administrative assistant, so. I might mark those with yellow tabs, but other than that, the lease agreement, there's two copies, looked okay to me.
Thank you.
After your announcement earlier.
Yeah, was it group's plan?
He's not going to sign that.
Oh, I'll sign it, if you two vote for it, I will vote against it, I think we need to make the corrections, that is me personally, but we can still function, that's your choice, press on. Chair would entertain a motion pertaining to the tower lease, if not, we would request Ms. Brendan to send that back.
Doesn't hurt to have her fix it.
Make some corrections, I don't think we're in a great time crunch here, so.
Urgency.
Who, who's, who originated these? Who needs to make the changes?
That came from Sangre de Cristo.
Yeah, and.
Is the name it Bill Ortiz?
Ortiz was the rep and I'm trying to think of their CEO's name.
And there's a Pat Bernhardt that signed something, that's the other name, is the contact person in the lease agreement.
Maybe Tom.
Paul Erickson has signed it, yes.
Well, that's the BLM, isn't it?
No, that's Sangre de Cristo, he's the CEO of Sangre de Cristo.
So maybe just to be fair to them, I think, given this is done too, he signed it, they've missed a typo, I think he can sign it and send it back and be pretty much courtesy playing, otherwise they're going to have to recycle it.
Just, but Chafee should be changed to Custer in two places and I think the contact person for Custer County should be changed so we don't have Tom.
Can you do it by hand?
Well, you can do it that way and send it back to them and have that, you know, initial the changes and send it back to them and have them initial it or ask them to just redo those pages.
One of the two.
With the corrections. If you're all in agreement, the contact person should be the administrative assistant.
Right, I do agree with that. Personally, I believe we should send it back to them and have it corrected, we've identified the corrections that we'd like to see done, but again, that is my opinion, gentlemen, you press on with whatever. If it was something that we were all against.
We're going to take a picture and sign it.
Time line, that's different, I just, again, I just personally think we got to get away from doing this, somebody's going to drop the ball sometime and something won't get changed and then. Somebody's going to drop the ball sometime and something won't get changed and then we're signing stuff that's not accurate, and I don't agree with that. So that's my opinion, but if there's no motion to the effect, then we will send that back.
Send it back.
You okay with that, Ms. Brenda?
Uh, well...
I'll get you the name.
Sure, okay. Why not?
Give it to Kelly.
Well, I think just have a...
Yeah, oh, I think Kelly needs to do it.
Put it back on your desk and don't give it back.
Yeah, he's wanting to get rid of those two files.
I didn't know what it was.
No, I just didn't want to haul it back with me last night. You others?
No.
And you want me to put that on for the 15 then?
If, what else we can get it back by then?
If we can get it back by then.
Yes, yeah. Well, I thought I stuck his card in my card file, but I'm not finding it, so...
So the, the assignment, assignment of right-of-way...
That can proceed, don't you think, Clint?
Who does that go to? Does your turn assign? Okay. Got it.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir. Thank you, gentlemen. The next item of business, Resolution 18. You know what? With your permission, I'd like to jump down one agenda item. Sheriff Byerly's been waiting to move to 18-17. You okay with that?
I'm all for having suffer.
18-17, authorizing the Custer County Sheriff to impose or remove fire ban stages. Sir, thanks for coming in.
Before we do that, just a question.
Okay.
What are we, are we going to talk about the current ban in this discussion or not?
We may. Not in this discussion, but probably before he leaves today.
I thought that was part of the thing that we were going to get done.
I think we should.
We got to.
But it's not part of this resolution.
Right, that's what I meant.
I would move that we authorize the sheriff to impose and/or remove Stage 1, 2, or 3 fire ban restrictions pursuant to the county ordinance 15-02. Move to second, it authorized the Custer County Sheriff to impose or remove fire bans. Discussion.
Two items. One is, I'm always going to go with your recommendations, so it just makes sense to do it because I'm going to say I agree no matter what because I don't have that expertise. But I am a little concerned, are we violating state law by doing this? And I know that's an issue that council brought up, and I tried to find it and I couldn't find where it said that. I just, I mean, I don't think we as a county should ever willfully violate any laws, so that's just a concern to me.
That's probably more my, I, after looking into it, a number of other counties in Colorado have a similar resolution or some of them even have done it by ordinance, but appears to be accepted practice has been in effect at least going back to 2000 in some of these documents that I've come across, so I think it's acceptable. It just seems to make the process a lot smoother for him to make the call right away and have you ratify it at your next regular meeting. Like you said, it's very unlikely you're going to go against what his recommendation is.
So, and my take on it is exactly that, that a lot of the counties that are doing it the way that you're proposing today is it streams, streamlines the process in the event something happens that it can be done. For example, like Pueblo County, so what they've done with it is when they have a red flag warning day, the sheriff can say, look, there's no burning today. And so he basically, they just put that out so when someone calls in, you know, that has a burn permit and they want to burn, they say, look, it's the red flag day, no burning. And it gives the sheriff that ability to, on those specific days. Quite honestly, you know, I can only speak for Shannon Byerly. I don't know how long I'll be the sheriff who will replace me, but my perspective is, is, you know, I'm not just going to talk to some old boy while I'm getting fuel and say, you know what, we're going to go into fire ban today because this guy thinks... That's not how it goes. There's a process and I want it based on science.
And that, I really want you to have this started. My only concern was are we violating law? Council says, nothing to worry about. I'm fine.
The only thing I want to just make a note of, and you kind of alluded to it, I hope you are the sheriff for a long time, but in the event somebody else is sitting there, I just, the wording of this is that the Board of County Commissioners shall be notified of the decision.
Absolutely.
And such decisions will be reviewed by the board and are subject to ratification or reversal. So the board could say, you know what, we appreciate it. We don't believe that's the case, whatever reason.
And I would always hope, no matter who's setting, in your positions, who's setting my position, that you can have a good relationship to discuss it because ultimately, we're all making that decision affects the entire county. We should be making those decisions based on the betterment of the county, you know, the welfare of the county, not our personal.
And unfortunately, it does allow for the politics to enter into it. Some politician could say, we're not going to impact the economy of our county. We're going to reject your fire ban.
And quite frankly, sometimes that, that might be a valid argument. I mean, it might be because again, you, you look at it from a little different perspective than I do. As Kit said before, as he does, I mean, we're all have a little bit different, and that's why I think it's important that we have dialogue before you pull the trigger, you know, and make a change. I think it is important.
And it does mention in coordination with the Wet Mountain Fire Protection District. So I think everything's in there. I mean, I, I think it's reasonable. And I'm all about streamlining the process. We were hurking and jerking every 30 days about trying to, we all knew we wanted to keep the fire ban in place and it was just a matter of...
But you had to do it.
Had to do it.
The timing, yeah.
So further discussion?
Yeah, I have a problem. Let me talk for a minute because I have the same issue you guys have. And it's been alleviated by a lot of this because it is an issue to have him make the decision without consultation with, and he's going to do that. It has to be in here, which it is. It might also want to include the national and BLM consultation as well. That's what he's been doing up till now, is we consider all climates within the county. I worry about, it's our job, it's our, we have that authority and we're passing it down to him. And then we're saying, well, but by the way, don't leave us out. We're going to make sure we're going to rubber standard for you. It's sort of the process we have now. Only difference is he, I like the idea of having him have some real time, don't burn today, but you can burn tomorrow kind of thing because things change that fast and people know they have to call you. And in fact, most people, I always have called the sheriff's department every time he burns, as a rancher. Because you have a work process.
Well, and then you don't get deputies showing up or the fire department...
Showing up because somebody's lighting a fire. And they should do that anyway. Everybody should be there. So I just want to be careful that we include there enough, you know, it says subject to ratification. So what does that mean? Does that mean he can't do it until we nod our heads on the telephone pole or what?
No, ratification is approving something that's already been done.
Right, after the fact.
Yes.
So that kind of puts us clear out of the loop, so...
Well, and that's the whole...
In that, if there was an issue, that's all I'm...
I fully understand what you're saying, but I think there's a trust issue here also.
No, I know.
I mean, if it was willy-nilly, a person's sitting here and I'm going, he's got flash and he wants to burn it, so he's going to, that's not the case.
No, I know. But there's going to be a different sheriff, and I just want to make sure that the right guys with, that understand he's got a process. He might be doing something that isn't even written down, which is good.
And the new commissioners can change it, or the old commissioner can change it. I mean, so it's valid for today. It makes sense for today. Heaven knows what the future's going to hold, and we can always amend and adjust as we need to as time goes on.
And the only other issue I have, I agree, is I hate to throw the burden on him by himself. He's not by himself, but he has the authority to say go. He doesn't, he doesn't have the advantage of you and I arguing with each other and saying, now, do we really? Because a discussion changes an opinion, and there are other circumstances that come up from somebody else's point of view, not a political point of view, but, you know, he's going to get, I know he's going to get it. Wetmore has a different climate. Let it burn.
Well, we've all gotten it just this year alone.
And then what do we do? We said, I don't care. We're going to make the whole county go down because how do you patrol? How do you enforce? And so that's, we're putting the whole burden on him now.
And that's correct because that, he is the fire marshal.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, that's who the burden goes to.
Whether I want it or not.
And you say you're going to do it with the fire chief, which I know you would do anyway.
Well, I just think it's for...
I mean, if you came to me and said, Jay, what do you think? I'm going to look at you and go, I have the foggiest idea in the world. You're the expertise.
Yeah, you're right. But you see, there's the liability piece too. He, I, if I was him, I'd say, geez, I'm going to sign up to this and if some goofball starts a fire and I, you know, what am I, I'm signing up for the liability. That's part of his job. But when three of us are discussing it, it's a bit different weight. That's all, you know? So I just want to make sure we all understand what we're doing to him.
And you and I talked about this because you were just asking my input the other day, Bill, and so I understand what you're saying. Personally, I believe, so no matter the decision I make or we make, we're all liable together ultimately. And now I might be the guy that says yea or nay, but ultimately, we're all going to be liable for it and Mr. Smith may jump in here and disagree with me, but whether I'm saying checking yes or no, it's not going to change the liability ultimately because the, because I'm making that decision for the county from that standpoint.
Clint and all the other counties that do this, do they have any pop process things you found that, or is it just that they did it?
It's all...
You don't know how they do it?
No, I mean, their, their resolutions are similar in language to this one. I followed one primarily from Yuray County, but there Mesa County, and I forget, I had several others here that I had printed out that I took a look at, so. But I think they all have basically the same provision. You give the sheriff the authority to make the decision at the time and then have him notify the board so you can either approve it or disapprove.
It gives him the authority to take it out of a ban too.
Yes. You can go both ways.
It's going to do as soon as we vote today, aren't you?
We'll talk about that.
Okay, further discussion? Hearing none, we proceed to vote. Hearing none, we proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pos nay? Motion carries. The authority for imposing or removing Stage 1, 2, or 3 fire bans has been transferred to the Custer County Sheriff.
Did it say that specifically? 2, 3 up there, so I can make sure.
So I just wanted to bring up, so we've done that, but it's your input, so what are your thoughts? Do any of you have issue with us pulling out of restrictions at this point?
Nope.
I mean, I'll give you my input, my thoughts. So, so I've talked to a couple people, you know, that are still talking, you know, they've had an inch and a quarter, inch and a half rain totals so far since, through the summer since April, basically. And so they're still a little concerned, not like, anything like they were. Humidity levels are up, fuel, fuel loads are down, are not fuel loads, but energy components, yeah, ERCs are way down because of the humidity level. But they also, in talking to them, they also understood that because of the conditions now that I personally think that we should come out because in so many parts of the county now, they've gotten over six inches of rain to the south, how, now, now there can be that perception that we're in fire restrictions just because we're in them, and it doesn't mean as much. When we're in restrictions, I want it to mean something, and so I think at this point we're kind of being counterproductive a little bit. That's my, my perspective. I don't think Kit disagrees with me either. Again, he has a little bit different angle to it, but, but he's not adamantly against it.
You used my name a second ago, so I'll answer. You have that authority. Go use it.
I agree, but again, but again, to, in order to support and appreciate the confidence that you've given to sign that, I want to have that communication open just to say, do you have any thoughts against?
And I wish I did, but I don't look at the fuel loads. I don't look at the combustibility. I don't know where the rain has fallen and where it has gone.
You don't sit on the fire?
I don't sit on the committees.
Phone call every day, every week?
I'm not the fire chief. You're out and about, he's out and about. So, I mean, I have always, and I intend to always, unless some anomaly comes along, concur with the experts.
Okay, I appreciate that.
So, I mean, I, I give you full, I trust you. Go do it. If you feel it's right, do it.
Yeah, so...
Okay, so then I'll, just to let you know, then we'll go ahead and come out of restrictions.
If you're comfortable...
Effective today, yeah.
If you're comfortable saying that now.
Sorry, just need to keep notifying.
We will. I'll send an email out to all...
Send an email just so we know. So when people ask me, what's the deal on the fire ban? I can say, well...
Yeah, we're out or we're in.
And that's the way the ordinance is worded, that everybody has to be notified.
And so I will build a, an email group. So I'll just click on it, it'll be fire restriction group or fire group, and I'll just send it out. And I'll include the media as well so that they're know. We'll put it on our webpage. We'll put it on the Facebook page as well.
I was trying to find ordinance 1502 and I couldn't find it.
Go right to the Custer County webpage.
Talking about our website itself.
I went there.
Look under OEM.
Okay, I was looking under sheriff.
It should be right there on the sheriff's page, right?
There's an open burn policy. Is that the same thing?
So, no, there's open burn policy in the ordinance. It should be right there.
Open burn ordinance, I'm sorry. It was cleared up at the top.
Okay.
I was looking down below. Thank you. Okay. So, yeah, briefly, can we, sir, talk about that?
Yeah, so as all of you know, there's been some discussion about modifying that ordinance. I've had a little bit of angst with some of the verbiage in there is confusing, so the general citizenry, the layman, layperson goes to it. Then we get phone calls, well, I have this type of, so we, I think we need to clarify some things here. We've gotten some input. OEM has provided input. Fire chiefs have provided input. I've provided input on some modifications. Then Clint went over some of our proposals and gave some feedback and some really good feedback on a couple suggestions we had that we could not do. So my intention is, is I'm going to go in and, and make a lot of updates and changes to it, then I'll send it to Clint and see what he thinks, and back to Kit and Cindy. We'll see if we can't modify that. Specifically, when we start talking about, you know, when, when we're in the Stage 2 burn ban, and we haven't really been in that a lot, at least in the last three years, but you know, the new fuels, like the pelletized fuel, these, these new propane burners that they have that you set out like a firing, those are controlled fuel sources. And quite, and, and the fire restrictions specifically have, you know, controlled fuel sources. You can still use those. Yes, it's open fire, but it's not wood that's spending, you know, sending sparks and embers and so forth. embers and so forth, so we just need to clean that up, so people know and understand that they can still use those.
Perfect.
And, uh, and just clear the, clear some language up. Of course, Clint will be key in making sure that we're following suit, but I just wanna let you know that, that, we just need to get that done. And I, in my mind, as long as we have a timeline at this point, to have it in place before we start, you know, but before the spring of next year, we'll be okay on that, because it'll take a little bit of time.
Okay. Perfect.
Thank you. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Good.
Yep, yep, yep. Okay, very good.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Have fun. A new title, a new job, new responsibilities, and we're going, more pay.
I didn't hear you.
Pay.
I'll make it.
Pay goes up, come into it.
Call the governor, tell him.
Oh, does it, does it? Thanks, sir. So you're buying lunch, that's what you're telling him.
Zero.
Yeah, which is zero.
Same amount that you always get, yeah.
Okay, next item of business on our agenda, thank you, sir, is.
Can I, can I just say something really quick? I screwed up, and I hit the wrong button on my computer, and I stopped the live stream, and I can't get it started again. So just, so no one goes off the deep end on a conspiracy theory.
We're under no law.
You got the recording going, right?
Yes, recordings.
So that's okay.
So resolution, next item of business, resolution 18 dash 14, establishing a poly, policy for membership on county boards, appointed by and serving under the purview of the county commissioners. What's the group's pleasure?
Can we, can we recess this, or not recess, can I answer this?
Sure, yeah.
Hey, Mike, you get my message? Okay, I would like to have your mom in here as soon as you can get here, uh, so we don't lose Tom and Jake to sign this. Yeah. Can you be here and give me a timeframe, so we can plan it, like 30 minutes? Okay, we'll see you there. Bye. Bye. All right, he'll be here 30 minutes or less. Can you tell her to box her up and get her in here sooner?
Well, yeah, we've got one item left, so I, I cannot sit here 30 minutes. I've got to be in Grand Junction at 6:00. So if we can.
Let me call him.
Make it any quicker, that's.
It's up, it's how fast you. I know Mike can be here in a minute. I'm taking 15 minutes to drive in here.
Who is Chafee Communications?
It's a new company, relatively new, uh, internet service provider.
Out of, from here?
Uh, no, they're not, and, and it, the name Chafee Communications doesn't have anything to do with Chafee County. They just selected that name. They're trying to provide ISP internet service from Leadville to Wolfville County.
And how, contact them?
I have no idea. Uh, well, unmarry. You can't yell at me if you contact him and say, no, I'm with a different company, but I believe that's who he talked to. So you may wade into that conversation genuinely, because I'm, I'm sure that's him, but, and now, obviously, that's a different company name.
Right. Yeah, Mike, Tom's gotta go to Grand Junction, so as soon as you can get here.
Chafee Communications would be better.
All right. All right, thanks. All right, bye.
Thank you, sir.
They're on their way.
Consider that a personal favor. Um, so what's the group's pleasure on establishing a policy for membership? We have a resolution prepared. I think we've all had an opportunity to look at that. Uh, if not, I have a hard copy here.
Resolution number, I guess, maybe resolutions here, I can't keep track.
Now, this is one you already voted on, but the exact language was not in front of you.
Right, and, and I have sent you some of my suggestions.
Saw that.
Which I incorporated.
Okay. Thank you. Not that you had to, but I just wanted to make sure.
And I didn't get any other input on it, so I, I put yours in there.
Okay. So, Jay, assuming this were to pass favorably today, then, uh, how does, would that, how do you see that impact on your role in affordable housing, tourism, and, uh?
All the other stuff.
Yeah.
Bottom line is, I don't think it would impact me at all. I have told everybody on those that I no longer will be a voting member. I will attend as a commissioner-type rep.
Okay.
Um, they all said that they would, you know, I asked them, do you mind if I have input? And they said, absolutely not. I mean, absolutely not mind, certainly welcome to. Um, I made this suggestion, and I resigned when I did, because I felt it was inappropriate, and I really appreciate both you guys jumping on the bandwagon going, you're right, we shouldn't do this.
No, I agree.
So I'm 100% behind this, I think it's the right thing. I mean, things that are gonna eventually come before us, it'll certainly be a conflict of interest if we sit on that board and we're a voting member. I question whether we even it'd be a conflict of interest if we kind of have open discussion in these, and they, they take our advice, and then it comes back before us to ratify. Is that a conflict of interest? I don't really know. We're not voting, so they have a right to vote their conscience. I feel this is totally appropriate. I think it's right, and I think we ought to do it. I have no issue.
Okay.
And the one thing I wanted to say, I took a stab at a definition of what a resident is for purposes of this resolution only. Paragraph number seven, I, that's one you might want to talk about.
Yeah, I have an issue with that. It's easy to fix, I think. Uh, he, he points out there, it's a year-round residence. Most states, because I've been in the military, recognize a full-time residence or, or a company. It's actually the military, you can have a residence anywhere, and it's legal to be a resident of Colorado, even though you're living in Virginia, and you can get, uh, you know, all your stuff done there. But, uh, from a civilian point of view, states want to collect income tax, and so they, if you spend more time out of the state than you're in it, then you are paying taxes in that other state, and it's usually less than six months. So a full-time resident is, is defined as somebody that spends, you know, five to six months of the, we, we could define it, but you've gotta be able to allow people to do that, because we have a lot of, they spend more, they look at this as a residence, but they got a home with relatives in Florida, and they're gonna spend four months. Because if you strap them to a year-round only, you're gonna limit the ability to get some real good people who you want on the boards. So I think we oughta, we oughta kinda keep it consistent with what tax laws are.
Yeah, and I don't agree following the tax laws.
I don't mean tax laws per se, but I.
Well, the guidelines based on paying taxes. I, I wasn't trying to, I don't mind what you're saying, I'm just saying, I, I don't.
Yeah, I agree.
I, I just don't believe that, bottom line, wherever you pay taxes, pay taxes is your residence, that you're a resident of that. Uh, I mean, you might be, but that, to me, the definition doesn't fly. I, I appreciate Clint's intent. I would love to be able to leave that in there and be just fine, but I know we're gonna get toasted, because somebody's gonna say, a person who divides his or her time, so you're saying I can't live in Phoenix for two weeks and then come back up here? I mean, that's the kind of argument I think we're gonna get into, so, uh.
Sound like the registered to vote, now there's a requirement for that, you know, certain residents.
That's trouble.
Yeah.
Um, my opinion is, I would like to even make it a little less restrictive in terms of if you have a financial connection, and this is for boards we're talking about, I'm not talking about anything else. So if you own a business, if you own a house with a second house, third house, I don't really care, if you have a financial interest in the county for purposes of serving on a board only, and that opens it up to a lot of people who are gone.
Casted.
Okay, whatever. It just will open it up to a wider variety of people, and the more people we can invite to be on our boards, the better people we're gonna get, because we'll have a larger pool to choose from. And I'm not thinking of any specific board, I'm just thinking, I would like to open this up to anybody who has a, some kind of pecuniary financial interest in our county.
Well, but that would open the door for a resident of Chafee County to be directing our boards up here.
Do they, do they live?
If they, if they own the house up here.
They own it, I think it would be fine, pers- personally.
I have a problem.
I understand.
I wanted to understand the community better than that.
Well, I think the spirit of the whole resident thing, obviously, is be here so you know what's going on, and so you can attend meetings. I truly believe that was the spirit of requiring somebody to be.
I don't disagree. Uh, we're kinda unique, we just don't have a huge population to choose from.
I do believe there is a certain base of our citizens that absolutely do not believe anybody should sit on any board in this county unless they are a full-time resident. The ones that had a board, period.
Right, and full-time resident, that's all I'm arguing, that the full-time resident has a definition in different places, and it's.
And right, and what we're trying to do is.
Being absent for three months out of the year, or you can.
This is such an important conversation right now, because it's gonna have other ramifications and other things we do, and it's appropriate that for the boards we come up with, this is what it is. Here's the, do you meet this criteria? Do you not? If you do, we're welcome to accept a letter of interest. If you don't, thank you very much, please come and sit in as a visitor, and you can voice your opinion there.
You know, the other thing I don't think we've talked about, if we have, I don't remember it, is that, let's assume that we come up with a definition of what we as county commissioners believe a resident is, then a, give, any given board could look at their bylaws and say, yeah, we're gonna stick with the resident, and we're taking a clear out. We're not forcing them to require their board members to be residents.
Yeah, I do too, that isn't.
Okay, how, how can you? It's in their bylaws.
Their bylaws are.
We still are.
Their bylaws, right.
Okay, so if that's the route you wanna go, then the commissioners would say, we will dictate whether or not the word resident, however that's defined.
Is conforms.
Is in your bylaws or not. So we're gonna tell them what's in their bylaws? I don't believe so.
No, I think we, I think we should establish a residency policy for all boards and commissions in the county. I feel we should.
They're your boards.
They are our boards. Uh, if we wanna start telling them what they're gonna put in their bylaws.
We're not telling them.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
We're giving them the boundaries.
I'm not telling what to put in there, I'm establishing what the county determines is a resident for people who sit on boards. That's a whole lot different than dictating to them what we should, what they should or shouldn't do.
Okay, it's down there, the bylaws for our groups, some of them say, you must be a resident, others do not.
What is that?
Others do not. There are bylaws that you don't have to be a resident to sit on their boards.
I understand.
This, this resolution says for the boards, so we, if you don't want it, we gotta talk about what are we gonna do here.
Maybe the first question we ought to decide is.
Or we don't want them.
Do we want to dictate to all our boards and commissions that a residency statement needs to be in their bylaws? And I think we have the right to do that.
Sure we do.
And if we do, then what we ought to do is have a consistent residency policy, whatever it is, right? I don't wanna be consistent.
I agree. I agree. See, the, boards and committees are not free to break the law, so it's like having a, you know, a tourism board, and they go up and do something that's not conform with that resolution, like three members minimum, their bylaws have to have three minimum, minimum, period. Or they can have more in their bylaws, but they have to meet the minimum requirements of the law.
Yeah, and you know, I mean, if someone wanted to go off on a tangent, and I know this is kinda annoying what I'm about to say, but what if a board said, our bylaws are that we must have a quorum to vote, however, if we don't have a quorum, we'll let the president or the chairperson make the decision? Well, we'd never approve that, okay? It would come to us, and we'd go, no, we can't approve, let one person dictate how the, so I think a residency statement, to me, first, absolutely makes sense on all the boards, and then we ought to say, and the residency for all boards and commissions is, and I'm willing to discuss it in any way whatsoever, and I think we should go up with a consensus of that.
I, I agree with your assessment there. I would move that we, uh, table this item of business concerning this resolution, because I think we need to back up at any start.
And I agree with that.
Is that a second?
I'll say it.
I really appreciate Clint's.
I want Clint to, let's look at the.
It's been moved and seconded to postpone resolution 18 dash 14. I did not put a specific date on there. We can add it anytime.
But I think as a consensus for the three of us, from whatever point you feel is appropriate, we need to resign any boards that were voting, or committees that were voting members.
Very committed to that, didn't they?
Yeah, I mean, E911 was the only one that where I saw there was still some of us voting members.
That, there, and that's a good point, because I thought about that. It's got the leadership of all the districts on that board voting, like the school district, the, uh, hospital, you know, people that are all involved, including the county. We should be able to hold, you know.
And that's not a board that's under the purview of the Board of County Commissioners.
That's the difference.
Then I'm, and I have no issue.
Further discussion.
Thank you, Clint.
Hearing none, so to vote, all in favor of postponement, resolution 18 dash 14, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Jose, most of the county. Uh, I agree, I think this document is good. Thank you for your work, we had to have some work to start with, and I think we need to do some more work, uh, because I just don't wanna get the cart before the horse.
And we have to decide how we're gonna do it.
I agree.
Okay. I have one other thing, there's no other new businesses?
No.
So, uh, when we were discussing the emergency stuff, and we were discussing Centrlink and all that, you all, three of us, got a note from some concerned citizen down in the Hardscrabble that lost their Centrlink, no phones, and they wanted help. It's not our job, I feel bad for them, but if we don't do that, I don't know how to, we ought to be able to do something about.
I responded to that person today and said that I was in favor of trying to get all the appropriate entities together. We are involved in that, because it's a county road.
Well, it's a county road, though, but the, but Centrlink abandoned, it's a private, uh, right-of-way, or you know, it's a, their business calling, and it's not our right-of-way. If they wanna abandon a phone line, you know, uh, that's a problem. So that's why I have to, and it's a, and then it gets into a private bunch of driveways, and Centrlink doesn't have to do anything if they didn't want to.
Well, yeah, the issue is the fact that their easement was in our county road, and now our county road no longer exists.
And it didn't exist.
So we are a player, whether we like it or not.
From that point of view, if we fix the road or not, that's true, but then Centrlink still has to decide whether they're gonna do it.
So I think that's what they were saying, was they basically indicated they're not gonna do anything if nobody else is gonna do anything. That phone line, I've seen it, I was, I walked down there, it's gone, it's just broken, it's a road, so, uh, I will reach back out to Abel and, uh.
You know, it's a sticky, sticky question that's being presented. It's a constituent who will not dial 911 if there's an emergency.
Can't dial it.
They can't get it out, is what I mean. And we, what obligation do we as a commissioners have to this person? And I don't know the answer.
Well, I think it's broader than that even, they, you got a lot of people out in the boondocks that don't have electricity or phone lines, and are we gonna be obligated if we, if we help spearhead the interior?
Well, and that's a, that's a good question.
Full goes and one in out.
And I think the difference in my mind would be, did you go in knowing that you had no phone line, no expectation of having phone, versus someone who had, not only had expectation, but had phone line and a utility, CCOM, put them off the map? So my first thought was, when I read this, maybe we ought to sign, as commissioners, a letter to CCOM going, you are abusing one of our citizens, and we demand you do something.
It's Centrlink. It's a hard line in the.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that's Centrlink, but you know, you get the essence of what I'm trying to say, because it's a private company, we do not have authority to make them do anything.
Right, no, and that's exactly what they said, at the meeting, uh, early on, is, we either will or we won't. They're now indicating if you would deal with the road, we'd be much more likely to